Okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting on Tuesday, December 19th will come to order. Our first continued public hearing, the 122 Foster Street Varsity Wireless is going to be continued till our January 2nd meeting, so there'll be nothing heard on that tonight. We are going to then hear the other public hearing, 21 High Street. And depending on when the town manager arrives who's coming to the meeting, we will either do the 1600 Osgood Street or 1210 Osgood Street, depending on whether he shows up or not. If he shows up, we'll do 1600 first, if not, we'll do 1210. So much for that. Okay, High Street.
This is a continued public hearing. The hearing opened at your last meeting. It is a hearing for a site plan review special permit and a plan development special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 59,440 square foot building containing 51 residential apartments, along with parking and associated improvements. There was a site visit conducted on December 8th. The four building corners were staked, and the applicant reviewed the building location, access roadways, parking, utilities, et cetera. The applicant's here tonight to provide the board responses to town departments, residents, and board comments that were made at the last meeting. And at the last meeting, there was one comment made by a resident related to a very bright light that he described as being on the former Osgood Mill, which is now the Sutton Pond condominiums right behind us. We did go and look at that light. It is very bright. It seems to shine more out than down. The building inspector has contacted the Sutton Pond condo association, and he is working with them to resolve that issue.
Oh, good.
So it was off property for that case. Lastly, in response to some comments expressed at the site visit with the building design, the applicant would like to review images of the historic site plan and photos of the Davidson forever would show buildings at various materials and styles. In addition, they have some buildings from Cambridge, Somerville area, which were primarily the inspiration for the proposed design. And Jennifer has submitted a couple from Lowell that she thought would be relevant in terms of the style that we're looking for here.
Thank you. So we had, my name is Tanya Hartford with RCG, and David Steinberg's here as well. We had sent a letter to the planning board last week, and we thought that might be a good point of, to go through those points. We're not going to read it verbatim, but just to touch on those. The first is the fire department comments. We had heard from the fire department that our original plans didn't meet the fire code to their satisfaction. So we've since done some redesign, and the fire chief yesterday has signed off on that redesign. So Jean, I don't know if you want to project up that image. We wanted just to show that to you. That just was approved, and we were sent over. Do you have the site plan?
Yes.
Because I just want to walk you through some of the changes that were made.
The fire apparatus.
The fire apparatus plan. So we're gonna, we're taking these revised plans, and Phil Henry, who's our civil engineer, is going through our stormwater management plan and has revised comments to Tech, the peer review consultant, and also to DPW that we're hoping to send out tomorrow morning, so that that way we'll get comments back from Tech before your next meeting. So then we can actually really get into the technical review at that point, but this time we can talk more about the design. So you'll see in the site plan that one of the things that we added was an access point going from the lower parking lot up to the upper parking lot, so that a truck can come in and then come out, as opposed to having to back up. So this also helps to provide better access to our, not only to the upper parking lots, but also if pedestrians are walking, if they're going to park in the lower garage, they can walk to the apartment complex as well. So we added that. And then we also had to add, in order to make the 250 feet that's required by fire code for the apparatus to reach any point of the building, so the truck can go all the way to the end, but then also can come up. You see this access point where there's some pavers up going towards the pond? So we will have some type of porous paver that will be there that a truck can go on that we'll maintain. And the fire chief was satisfied with those plans. So those are the major site plans that were made. We also, you'll see, and we'll get into more detail with the tech comments, but we also moved some of the snow storage, so it's not, no longer in the bio-retention area at the end of the parking lot, but is actually in the swale, in the middle area there. And that was by comments of DPW. And we changed the water line connection, so it's actually connecting, that was based on the DPW comments as well, so we're connecting to the water line that's up by the garage, which connects into the town water, and they felt like it had better pressure. And that was also satisfactory to the police, the fire chief as well. So we can take comments if you guys have any feedback. I don't know how you want to work it, or if you want me to go through everything and then you comment at the end.
It might feel a little bit easier to step through point by point.
Okay. So this, that's our, that's the fire department and DPW comments. And again, we'll get more technical feedback, but that's that point there. So do, if there's any questions on that? None? Okay. So then the police department had some feedback. Jean had clarified on sort of what it was, that they were, what those comments were. It was really, in relation, obviously our dumpsters, you know, we would follow any of the regulation, the commercial noise regulation. The other piece was they had said, you know, the parking that we're proposing for the project has to be accommodated in our parking lots, provided which it does. So we have, we're working on our revised parking chart, which I don't have for you today, because we had to cut out some of those spaces for the fire department, so I need to reallocate those, but you'll have that in that technical review. And I think they also had a concern about the fact that we are leasing the upper level of the garage to Merrimack College on a school year basis, so that lease runs from September to May. And right now, we can accommodate all the parking that's required and that lease, so we're not taking away spaces that are required. And when this new building's built, we may be under, and if that's the case, then we would just adjust the lease. That said, we don't know if we're going to continue the lease. It's on a year-by-year rate basis on whether we do that. So that was that comment. And then, Jean, if we want to go down, I think we might, maybe we end with the design comments. We had some public, so that we can focus on the design. We had some abouter comments. The one was regarding the light that was shining in from the cars coming up the ramp. You know, when we were talking about it, we think it was, it's not just because of the Merrimack College bus, it's actually just because there's more use in that garage than there ever was before. So we did notice that there actually used to be plantings along that driveway that had fallen over and we had taken down, so we're going to replant those. We just can't do that until the spring. So we plan to do that, and then we also, they pointed out that it looks like some cars are cutting across our lawn, because there isn't any plantings there. So we're going to be building up some snow there, and we're planning on then planting there too, so cars can't cut over the lawn to take a shortcut into the garage. And then Jean already addressed the light at the Osgood Mill. There was also some question about the trees that were removed along Mill Pond. And, you know, just essentially, we have, there have been some trees that have fallen, and, you know, we've tried to replace what we can, but otherwise, that's what we've removed. And then we talked about the fact that there had been a lot of culvert, the work going on at the culvert, and the wear structure, new wear structure, which is causing a lot of the construction that they're seeing out there. And we hope to finish that by next week. I mean, we'll be doing some landscaping in the spring along that, but otherwise, we're really anxious to be done with that as well. And the cofferdam should be coming out hopefully Friday, and that'll help raise the level of the pond and get that area back to the way that it was. There was some concerns about the traffic impact. You guys did see the traffic study that was done 10 years ago, when we come in with a preliminary plan. We had an update to that traffic analysis where they didn't think that there was going to be, and they felt like there wasn't really going to be any increase based on sort of that preliminary traffic study. Really, it'll be minimal, the cars that are coming and going. So, and Tech actually reviewed that as well and provided those same comments. And then there was an email that the fire chief had received from a resident on Water Street regarding stormwater runoff and the fact that the lawn was very flooded, and we actually feel like a lot of the measures we're going to be putting in place with this project are going to help with that. And with the stormwater management system to help with that runoff from Walker Road, we're working with the conservation commission to make sure that it's all managed appropriately. And we think that we have some good plans for that. I know that there was also some comment about us clearing that used to be all wetland. Since we've owned it, that's always been maintained as a lawn, so we haven't cleared anything from there. And we've always been very honest that we were planning on putting a building there through the preliminary plans and through all the plans that we've had. And I think that, oh, there was some issue about whether it was going to meet fire codes. It's going to be a fully sprinkled building, and then, as you can see, we meet all the fire codes with that as well. So that's the major comments from the abouters. So before I get into design, I'm not sure if there's any questions on any of that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So we wanted to walk you through just how we came up with the design, the, you know, where we came up with this clapboard design. And I think when we were, we've gone through a whole design process. You know, I've only been working on this project for a year. Dave's been working on it for a lot longer. And, but if you looked at the variations, we have looked at various materials for the building. And what we found is that the brick just wasn't working when we were redesigning it. It just didn't look right. It didn't look like it, it would never, it would never quite match the brick that was there. And so we found some, we went back and looked at some historic photos, and we said, what if we just went with a clapboard building? Because you can see from this site plan that there were various building styles, there were buildings in various locations on the site. So we thought, let's just, you know, rather than trying to replicate a brick building, let's try some, let's try to just do it in clapboard. So if you go to the next image, Jean? You can see here, this was on the west side. You can see the brick building at Four High, and then next to it, some clapboard buildings that were on the site. And the symmetry of the windows, we picked up on those for the project that we were working on. You know, the fact that you had some windows and doors that were a little bit offset, you know, we tried to, we picked up on that as well. And again, the massing of it is very similar to the other, is similar to the building that we're putting up. So if you go down to the next image, Jean? So we looked at some other clapboard styles, and this was actually based on a comment, some feedback that you had made, Mr. Simons, on sort of this whole, the strong storyboard we picked up from some of these buildings in Cambridge and Somerville. If you go to the next one, you can see the symmetry of the windows and the different design. And then if you go to the, this, here, you know, we were different materials to sort of break up the massing, so we're using some, like, some shiplap-style clapboard and then some regular clapboard to sort of, again, break up some of that massing. And then there is that same symmetry of the windows. So that's sort of where we came up with our design. So, you know, we have our architect, Keith Kelly's here from Opech, who can answer any questions you guys have on the design, and we can have that discussion. And I know you brought some, you have some photos as well.
My understanding, these are from Lowell? They are adjacent to a mill building?
These are the photos I have during the meeting last week. I think I showed some of you after the meeting, and it's a, it just, the plans that we saw previously reminded me of this particular building that does fit in very well with the historic mill buildings and malls. So Peter had asked me to submit them for everybody to see.
I think it's better to say it's a similar, you know, type of design to that, to what you've come up with. I mean, this is two stories. You showed us some four-story buildings, so there's, you know, some subtle differences, but there's some similarities there.
Yeah, we tried to, you know, we even tried to break up, I think here, they have the windows together. Actually, one of the things that, after our Machine Shop Village reviewed this, I think we separated out our windows. If you pull up our design, Jean, so that we can remind everybody of the design we have. I don't think it's on this one. I didn't put it on this, on these slides, I don't think. So is the, it's the plans, do you have our plans set? Our exterior, yeah, the elevation? No? Yeah, it might be in that, in the very end? Is it the?
No.
Oh, that's just the site plan? Okay. Do you have the plans, Keith, of the building, the design, our current building design? Okay. I just want to have us to have it as a reference point.
I'm sure I'll have it from last week's meeting?
Yeah, from the last meeting. Yeah, so similar to that other building, you know, we have the awning, we're trying to bring some contemporary to, you know, to the building, but then pulling in some of those mill elements. So you can see, again, how we broke up the windows. We have single windows as opposed to having the windows together. Over the door, the front, the front entry door, we have what looks like some of these loading dock doors, essentially is what we tried to, you know, mimic. We made our front doors larger than normal, again, to have that industrial feel. And then, and then you can see the different materials. So that, so the, so the different size clapboard, Keith, is right there, just in that middle part in the front. Is that right?
Yeah. So on the base here, and then up what would be the entry tower, if you will.
And then we also kept the, you know, we did have a little bit of ins and outs, and we changed that too, so it was just a straight building as opposed to something that sort of went in, it had a lot of ins and outs, which you'll see in some more traditional garden-style apartments.
Does this rendering represent the color scheme, your preferred color scheme?
It does. Although I have to say, is that I don't feel like they come across as well. Keith, do you have the?
Gray or is it a pale?
There it is. Yeah, it's a gray. It's two different types of grays. I think every computer screen we looked at had a different, but they actually do have the paint samples, so.
I think we have those. The grays and the entry doors and the black for the trim and windows.
And again, we did go to Machine Shop Village. We talked about the building. We'll be going back to them with more detail on the windows, the doors, the trim, the paint colors, the fencing, the Juliet balcony, you know, what doors we're using for that, and the railing system. So those details that we're still working out, we hope to have that to them, the lights, which we do have the lights, but.
I'm really glad you're doing that. I mean, I think that, in some respects, is the best way to do it, because you've got a local group that lives in the neighborhood, has a sense of the history of the neighborhood, and they'll can see it a little bit better than we can, because they're there all the time, so.
It's good that you have that. I mean, they're a smart board, and we had some good conversations with them. We had a preliminary conversation, just like we did with you, and then we actually went back to them to open the public hearing, so.
Do you know when that meeting is, in January?
It's the 25th.
Can I ask how you arrived at the gray color?
I think it was just our preference in-house. We had actually looked at some greens and grays, and we felt like the gray fit in with, you know, the red doors, and it's, and if you look at, you know, really, if you look at other historic mill buildings, a lot of them are actually white, which we didn't want to do white, so we were.
You can see there are palettes of historic colors that come with the Sherwin-lames or Benfina Moore paints. So we sort of were laying out things that looked like a contextual, you know, time-period historic palette, and of those, some of them were pretty bold and seemed like they'd be out of place, and this seemed like it was, you know, relatively neutral, actually, you can sit out by the pond quietly.
So just for myself, the way I'm reacting, the photos you showed in your earlier PowerPoint, the samples of the strong storyboard, for example, those are sort of brown and tan templates. And then the photos that were shared with the board from Lowell was also brown. And, I mean, the photos you provided and then the other ones from Lowell, I thought were very appealing, and I, I mean, I personally have a very different reaction to that, to the grays, but that's just why I asked how you had ended up selecting that.
It's an interesting thing. I mean, to relate a personal story, we just had some work done in our kitchen and had it repainted, and, you know, we first put one color of paint down, and my wife looked at it and says, this is a disaster, and then came up with something that she absolutely loves. So paint is a hard thing to get right. Color is a hard thing to get right. That's where I think the more people that look at it and have a good sense and eye for it, I think that's where you end up with the best product, so.
Yeah, we were going to bring painted pieces of the proposed siding that would be used clapboard siding to the Machine Shop Village group, and sort of work through that level of detail with them.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Jean, anything else we need to cover?
No. So the next is the real technical review. So they have held off at resubmitting the plans to Tech until the fire department signed off, because there was a substantial change there. So they should be sent to Tech, I would guess, by now or tomorrow?
We were sending that, because we got the fire, we're still working out just some of those last-minute tweaks to the plans. So I think Phil's done. We're waiting for the landscape plan, which we hope to have tonight, and the goal is to have it out by tomorrow morning.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think they're all some of the comments and could possibly be reviewed and accepted by the next meeting. So if that's the case, then I'll draft a decision. If it's still a work in progress, then I might have to go one more meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
If there's no other questions to the board, I don't know if there's anybody from the public here or has a question. It's here for this. If you could, if you could come up to the speaker and identify yourself, and we'll see if we can get you an answer.
Hi, Linda Fuca, Forest Water Street. I found this online. It was a traffic volume report that was done in 2015. I just gave Jean a copy. My thing is, with all the traffic in this area, these roads aren't made for a lot of traffic, especially from the corner of High into, like, St. Michael's School. That's always one lane. You can never have two lanes of traffic. And the same with East Water sometimes. We have five schools within a mile, and now we have, Jade's going to have a 200-person occupancy permit plus employees. Just my husband and I bringing my grandson to school the other day. There was a Budweiser truck on the right, there was two delivery food trucks, then on the left, there was a UPS post office truck, and there was one lane of traffic going down the middle of High Street. And my concern is...
So let me add, if you don't mind, is it certain hours of the day where it's particularly bad? Is it like when school, 8:00 in the morning, 8:30 in the morning?
It's deliveries all day long down High Street. We usually try to go straight down Water, but then you have the double parking on each side, so you have, like, you can't stay in your lane. You have to go over the, into the other lane to go down Water Street, just in that section from the corner to St. Michael's School, the church parking lot.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Because I think some of it is a pre-existing set of circumstances, and obviously you're concerned about the incremental impact, which I think will be, I think any traffic study would tell you it's relatively small, but the core problem is the problem you're experiencing today.
Yeah. And this is before Brad Street was built. It was before the apartments were occupied. This traffic report was done in 2015. So it was before all this other stuff was added in, and then the Jade's not there yet. That's not open. If any other businesses are in there, you know, before this construction, that's going to be, even coming here today, there were two delivery trucks on the left going down High Street. You look down High Street, there were two delivery trucks, so that it was just one lane of traffic, one lane for traffic.
I could see this time of year, though. I mean, I realize it happens other times, but delivery trucks are everywhere, right?
No, but these are food trucks, food, beer.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's for the businesses, and we still don't have one of the businesses open yet.
No, I see your point.
You know, and it's constant all day. If you just go to, down there for a cup of coffee or something and just watch all day, it's, you can't use both lanes. It's already problematic. And the, on the end of East Water, there's no sidewalks, so you're getting all this extra traffic. A lot of these side roads for the kids to walk to school don't even have sidewalks, and some of the sidewalks are already in disrepair that they can't walk on. So you're getting, it's not, it's not safe with all the school, kids walking to school with all the heavy traffic.
Well, I will tell you, I think the people who own the mill actually have worked harder than, you know, just about anybody in town to make a good road environment, make good sidewalks, and be good neighbors. And I'm, I think that, and I think the traffic study that we have bears out the fact that the marginal impact of this is nominal, but it's the existing set of conditions that's the problem, which is broader than just the mills. But I'm sure, you know, we'll talk to the DPW, we'll talk to the police about things that can be done to mitigate the problems that you experienced today.
All right.
And I think, you know, please, if you have specific examples, please tell Je-- yeah, good. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay, any other questions before we move on? Okay. So we will, since the town manager is not here yet, let us do 1210 Osgood Street, Princeton Properties.
So applicants for 1210 Osgood Street were granted several special permits approximately a year ago, almost to the day, that allowed for a multi-use development consisting of four buildings of residential apartment units totaling 190, I'm sorry, totaling 196 units and approximately 43,000 square feet of commercial space in four separate buildings. It is important to note that there were two applicants for the project, Princeton Properties for the residential component and for Jeddah Development for the commercial component. The special permits for each applicant are tied together by common driveways, stormwater infrastructure, maintenance agreements, et cetera. Princeton Properties is here tonight to provide the board a project status update, as well as to request an insubstantial modification to the site plans. Since the request includes a proposal to change the drainage design and treatment process, the applicant requested that Eggleston Environmental conduct a preliminary review of the proposed changes to determine if she believed this to be a viable approach. For the board members that may be, are not familiar with Eggleston Environmental, she was our long-term stormwater peer review. She did the peer review for this project, and there's a substantial amount of stormwater infrastructure, so we felt it was best to reach out to Lisa, and she did conduct the preliminary review. The proposal will require a filing and a public hearing with the conservation commission. Their next meeting is January 10th, and I'm assuming that an application will be filed with them for that meeting. So my recommendation tonight is to let the team provide the project status update, present the proposed changes and reasons for them, and then we can discuss the peer review comments and the timing.
Thanks, Jean. I'm Jeff Brown from Princeton Properties. I'm also here on behalf of For Jeddah Development with their authority, which we've provided to Jean as well. I don't know if we have any of the site plans. I know there are some new members, so I'll take you back through the process. We spent more than a few times in front of the planning board.
Sorry, I have a good sidebar.
Okay. If you come back, back down one, Jean? Right there's good. I think this is the best depiction of the site. It's a 14-acre site, so as Jean said, it is a mixed-use development. It's a B-2 district, so it is allowed in a B-2 district. I won't get into the history of the zoning change, but that's a fact that we may address a bit as we describe the changes. But in the front, you see four buildings at the, just off of Osgood Street, and that's the For Jeddah portion of the property. Those are commercial buildings. The one to my left, closest to the traffic circle, is a bank. The other three buildings will be a combination of retail, restaurant, and commercial buildings. You then see a shared parking lot, as Jean explained, and then in back of it, there are four residential buildings in which, owned by Princeton, in which we'll build 192 apartment units. It is a 14-acre parcel. It is divided approximately, there are four acres up front for the com- It is divided approximately, the, there are four acres up front for the commercial and 10 acres in back for the residential. Again, as Gene explained, we share with the, with the commercial, the access drive you see to the left, you cannot see it as well to the right, but there is a right-in, right-out only access drive that comes up the northerly side of the site. We have a clubhouse associated with the residential apartments and public sewer and things of that nature, and they're across there, we are developing cross easements between the relative parties for use of that. As Gene mentioned, in December 2016, we were before the board, and both parcels received a number of permits, namely, site plan review, a special permit, there was a height waiver and a special permit for a common drive. So that's what happened in December 2016. The permit contains quite a few conditions, so we had, we had our work ahead of us to start getting to work on that. So since that time, we've worked with Mass DOT. In front of that access drive, as you can see, on the opposite side, kind of off the page, is Barker Street. During our hearing process, there were a number of residents from the Barker Street, I believe it's French Farm Road residential area that had raised complaints about the traffic and the intersection. So part of our permitting involves traffic signalization, striping of the roadway, and so that required us to go through the DOT process. So as we were going through the Department of Transportation process, we started coordinating with the town, with Eric Cifori, with the town manager, the DPW director, and together we were able to submit a grant application through the state called Mass Works. And recently, the Mass Works grant was awarded, roughly $2.7 million. But with that came some additional features to the site that will be required to participate and with the DPW to develop. There'll now be sidewalks approximately 1,000 feet long southerly on both sides of Osgood Street, down to the Butcher Boy section of commercial area, and there'll be about a 300-foot extension northerly. I believe there's a building complex up there involving a insurance building and a florist shop. So we'll extend the sidewalks northerly. There's also quite a fair amount of sidewalk construction on the Barker Street side of the development to create safe passage, crosswalks, things of that nature. There are left-hand turns, and that's an entire process we are going through with Mass Department of Transportation and are currently, hopefully nearing the end of that process as both the regional and state Mass DOT reviews our project. We developed an A&R plan to divide the property into the 10 and 4 acres as we, as we described as a condition of the permit. As Gene mentioned, and you can see off to the south and the west of the property, there are some wetland pockets, so we had to go in front of Conservation Commission, we did that, received our Conservation Commission permit. Another condition of the special permit was, as we were analyzing the sewer flow for the project and working with DPW, we discovered that off-site, there was about 270 feet of DPW sewer line that was in some failing condition, and a concern was raised by DPW as to the adding of our flow to the system as it affected these suspect pipe areas. And so we worked with DEPW to develop a plan that we will be a part of replacing those 270 feet of piping. Some of them were in a resource area, so we have a separate Conservation Commission order for that. We went back to MEPA to see if there was any additional certificates necessary there. Have a determination by MEPA that no further certificates are necessary. So we are working through the, the conditions of the permit before we apply for a building permit, hopefully in the spring, but we still have a fair amount of work left to do there.
So for this project, as always, we've conditioned several things to occur prior to the endorsement of the plans, and those hurdles are still being met. So these, the decision itself and the plans that were approved have not been recorded at the registry yet.
Correct.
They have to get through the Mass DOT process and a few other ones.
Right. So as we started to consult with our contractors on how to build this property, it quickly became apparent that it was going to be easier, more efficient to build the property if we were to lower the elevations across the property from what we had originally projected when we sought our permits. So our request for an insubstantial change is to lower the elevations across the property entirely, so not a particular building, not a particular parking lot, not, not anything particular. There's a two to three decrease in elevation across the site. So all the buildings will start two to three feet lower as a base, but will still achieve the same height as we projected before, so I've not asked for any modification of the height waiver, the buildings will still be at the same height. And then from that came some issues that Joe will get into in a minute that pertain to, how does the lowering of the site affect the stormwater management system and design? And that's when we brought in Lisa Eggleston. But just to give the board some highlights, reducing the site two to three feet eliminates about 125,000 cubic yards of fill that would need to be brought in, about 8,500 truck trips are saved. We, we project that we'll be able to shorten the construction time by three to four months. And one of the issues that was raised during the initial permitting process, raised properly by Mr. Boynton, was as the property was higher, we weren't fully incorporating as much as possible the natural topography of the site, which slopes from the front to the back, and that was causing some visibility issues with the buildings as, from the Osgood Street site. So this lowering of the site will enhance or decrease visibility and further address the issue raised by Mr. Boynton, which going back kind of in the history of the project was one of the critical issues that we sought from the planning board in, in supporting our town meeting, zoning override amendment, and so I think we're, this design is truer to the project as we projected to the board at that early stages, and it will decrease the heights again by two to three feet. And they already were minimal. There's a significant masking of the residential buildings because the topography of the site again goes front to back, so when you have these tall commercial buildings up front, as you go, as the project slopes to the back, you're really just seeing the tops of the residential buildings that you see in the front there and practically not seeing at all the residential buildings at the back of the site. So that's, was a result of the value engineering that came about through our general contractor as how, what would be a smarter way to build the property. But again, we've done this in a fashion that changes absolutely nothing with regards to the property, and that was the basis upon which I felt an insubstantial change request was warranted. As I said before, the number of buildings haven't changed, the size of the buildings haven't changed, the height of the buildings have not changed, nor their location. There's no, there's no change in the location of any other features of the site, the access drives, the driveways, any other, any other features. There's walkways. One of the points that we raised during the presentation of this site is there are common walkways that connect the commercial area to the residential area and back, and I think at the time we called them corridors, and those still remain the same. Because everything's been lowered, there's no, we haven't run afoul of any ADA requirements, where we now have to create zigzagging and things of that nature, so the elevation will still remain the same. Those corridors will still be in their very same position as they allow the residents of the apartment complex to come down towards the commercial area and use the restaurants, the banks, and things of that nature. So again, that was the basis upon which I believed under condition 96 of the special permit, it allows us to come back to the board and seek an insubstantial change, or if in the board's opinion, these are substantial issues, to come back and present whatever else you feel would warrant your approval of them. As Gene mentioned, the one issue that did arise as we were going through this was the lowering of the site affected the design of the stormwater management system that required, and we participated, we got out in front of this issue, reached out through Gene to Lisa Eggleston to start examining, you know, what her thoughts were regarding DEP compliance on the stormwater management redesign, and there are a few letters in your packet from Lisa, and I'll let Joe get into those issues unless someone has a question generally regarding the changes that we've made.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe I missed something in what you presented, but what was the initial reason for building up this site a few feet to this, this proposed grade? I'm just interested, because, why would you need to bring in Phil if now you're wanting to lower the-
I think it was, we were always going to lower the site. We were gonna lower the site more in the front and less, less in the back, because that's what we felt was going to maintain a topography that would facilitate the buildings. And so there was always some lowering of the site, this is just a further lowering of the site.
But you're bringing in, the, the plan was to bring in Phil?
Initially it was. I think Joe can answer it probably clearer than I can.
There was a, certainly a challenge. The, the site slopes from left to right, moving, moving north on Osgood, but it also slopes to the back and to the left. I think it's approximately 25 feet of, of topographic change from one side of the site to the other. And inherent to the residential ground plane design, we've got fairly large residential buildings that want to be flat. We couple that with the commercial, which, which also wants to be flat. But then we wanted to have pedestrian connectivity between the two. Our, our driving point to start the project as far as where the grades were going to go was to, was the desire of the commercial developer to have some presence on the street, some visibility of the, the building facades. So that's, that kind of drove the, the baseline elevations for those buildings as they marched up the hill on Osgood Street. And now we have to march from that, moving back into the, to the left down the hill, but do it in a manner that was, that was compliant with ADA regulations for, for slopes and such. Coupled with that was, was the fairly high groundwater and trying to get the drainage to work in, in different areas of the system, of the site with the systems that needed to have a certain setback from that groundwater. So all those factors kind of came into play and, and, and set the elevations. And I'll, I'll be one that, that admits tonight that Mr. Boynton asked me straight out, can it, can it be lowered more? And I said no in the public hearings, and I believed that it was no at, at that time. What we've done here with regards to the approach to stormwater is to incorporate a totally different system to store the water. We had used, the prior design used the arched plastic chambers, and they come in certain sizes that, that afford some flexibility, but not, not as much flexibility as the new product that we're, that we're implementing. And the new product is, is, comes in four-inch increments and is stackable, so that we can really start to play with that and move it around the site with the topography and increase some of the lower-reach areas as far as the, the size, so that we can get the volumes that we need to provide the necessary recharge and, and attenuation. But work with that and essentially allowed us to, to, to lower the grades. So the, I guess the one downpoint here is that we, we're, we are taking that commercial piece and lowering it a little bit more. And we've got the full buy-in and assent of the commercial developer, he still believes that he's got, obviously he wants a viable commercial product, and he feels that it's, it's still, still acceptable. But that was the first point, to then be able to, to, to lower the, the balance of the site in the, in the back. There's also a, a great savings in the, in the retaining walls, because the, essentially the back of the site was a, was a, a large fill and necessitated a retaining walls. We still have retaining walls, but they're lower, so they're, they're, they're less, obviously less money and less work to, to construct them.
Can I just jump in and give you some summary? It's two to three feet lower, and you're taking, you're changing your type of stormwater management, and instead of having, you know, 23 different ones, you're gonna have eight or something like that, right?
We had 13 systems, and now, now we've got eight.
13, I thought it might have said 23.
Yeah.
I just read it quickly. Okay, so less stormwater systems, using a different type, and going down two to three feet.
Right.
Okay. So I guess my question for Peter and John who were here, were those two items, things that were important to either the board or to members of the public at the last, at the hearing? And in that direction, is that the direction that the board or members wanted to go? If it's, that's to me where I'm kind of thinking about whether this is substantial or not?
Yeah, I, I mean, in, in my view, this absolutely is substantial, and I think we can do it really fast, but there's no way, given that drainage is one of the absolute most critical things, and it's complicated, the changes are complicated, I don't see this as being insubstantial, I think it's substantial. I'm delighted to say it. I, I think it's great, I think it's a major step forward, but I still think we have to come back and make a modification of the decision. At least that's my opinion. I don't know about you, Peter, but-
Well, I'm delighted to see it, and I appreciate you, through the value engineering, you know, looking at it, thank you, but I, I am delighted to see it. I would agree with John.
Well, I think that the key is, is that, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, you said it was a, a change of the system, and that, that-
Yeah, I-
When you're talking about changing the system, that this isn't just a slight modification, if changing the way you deal with stormwater, that, that makes me think substantial.
First of all, I don't think I introduced myself. For the record, Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates. I think to Mr. Goldberg's point, with regard to what was vetted in the public forum and what was very important to the, to the, the items that were important to the board were not the stormwater. And the stormwater was, was wholly left to the, to the peer review consultant and myself to work out behind the scenes. While, just move over.
Does this section have a more accepted one, or is this present?
While we are changing the, the type of systems, the, the type of product that we're using for storage, it's, it's still the same, the same approach to stormwater. There, it's subsurface infiltration. Instead of plastic chambers, we're using these, these other, other systems, and we're consolidating some of the systems. So this, this is the, this is the original, the 13, 13 systems highlighted in blue. What's important to note in this is the pink areas, which are- What's important to note in this is the pink areas, which are the discharge points. Here, 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 and there. Missed the highlight on that. The proposed systems are consolidated down towards the back of the site, but the discharge points are exactly the same. And the amount of stormwater that's going to, to the surroundings is, is the same rate and volume is comparable.
Is the capacity comparable?
The capacity's, the capacity's comparable because, again, we, we haven't changed anything on the surface. All the parking is the same, the garage, the garages are the same, the, the number of parking spaces, location of parking, everything. You'll note on, on the layout and materials plan that's, that's submitted, under the revisions, it says no changes to this, to this plan, to this sheet. Because that's how, that's, we, that's exactly what we did. We didn't change anything surface-wise. So we feel that, and that's why we jumped out in front and, and asked Jean to assist in maybe engaging Lisa to look at the stormwater from, from the standpoint of, do you, do you agree with this change? Do you agree that it doesn't change the, the basic approach? Do you agree that fundamentally, there's, there's, there's not a, there's not a difference? And, but for one item that, that we can discuss when we get into Lisa's memo, she agrees with, with that. So, again, I go back to what was important within the public domain, what were the questions coming from the, from the public? It was, it was the intersection and the traffic and the visibility and all of those, those superficial issues. And Lisa and I were dealing underground.
And to say that the drainage is not an important one of the considerations that we take into account and that ultimately is important to the public is just not true. I mean, it's, it's extremely important. And I think you've done a good job with this. It's just, she's not completely done the review. We don't know 100% what the impact is. It is a material change to what you're doing. I think we can have this done by the time you publicly hear it, but I think it, my view is that it's more, it's a big enough change that it requires, you know, a public hearing process. That's, that's just my personal...
We had discussed that, Jean, and anticipated that might be the case, and I think the 16th...
The application was really, should have been filed last week, but I will take an application this week. I have a week play in an application. We can get it noticed in time to open a hearing on the 16th. I've spoke with Lisa today. She thinks she could turn around comments for the 16th. Again, I'll note that she's done a preliminary review, not a deep dive review of this. I don't know if Joe wants to get into, given that it looks like it's going to go to public hearing, that she has one concern that's referenced as number two in both of your memos. Joe could give you the high level of that, but essentially, she's just challenged the applicants to continue to look towards providing recharge up gradient from the wetlands. So that is what I would say is she's deeming substantially different than the last design. It's more concentrated, closer to the wetlands, and so the recharge isn't coming across the entire site in this design. However, she's pointed out a lot of pluses to this design, too. I don't think, go ahead.
I'm kind of on the fence. I think if I had maybe heard this originally, that I could potentially be convinced that it's insubstantial, but where I didn't, I think I need to rely on the people that heard it. The other thing I'd say is I did read the peer review points, and I, I think for the most part, she said this is better.
Right.
But better doesn't mean that it's not substantial. It could be substantially better, which is good, but that could still mean that it's a big change.
And in the end, there could be some subjective things that she's saying, not my call, the plan of award can weigh the amount of fill, the retaining walls, the condensing of the amount of structures and the maintenance associated with those. I mean, it's just, she's purely looking at the stormwater design and commenting on that.
Is it possible to acknowledge that with the exception of the drainage, all these other changes are insubstantial such that when we come before the board, we're really focusing on a narrow issue as opposed to going back through, you know, all the things that I just talked about, the beginning elevations of the buildings and, and things of that nature?
I think focus on what is different. What we want to understand is, to me, there's two things, is understanding whether it's rock solid, the engineering, everything associated with your change, because it's a very substantial change in your, your drainage strategy. Saves you a lot of money, faster construction, better for the town. Huge win, but it is substantial, so we need to make sure it works right.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing is to make sure it doesn't cause any other changes that you haven't foreseen yet, you know, in what you're proposing, like, is, will that have to go to the conservation commission?
It does have to go to...
Yes.
Yeah. So what if they say something? That's what I, what I don't want it to trigger a cascade of, of changes or that maybe you hadn't anticipated.
Yeah, I believe their hearing is, their hearing is on the 10th.
What we're saying is, let's try to do it, open it, enclose it, and vote it in one night. That's what we want to do, and so you won't really lose any time, but we'll, we'll go through, I think, a pretty thorough due diligence process.
And as I was starting to say, we, we're scheduled to be before the Concom on, on the 10th, so we'll have some of their comments that we'll be able to relate back to you on the 16th.
You had mentioned out in the letter from the EPA. Could you, could we see that as well?
Yes.
I'd just like to see that.
I don't believe you have that.
I didn't see it in the packet.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just to preface her of the one issue, I'll, I'll kind of lay it out real quick for the board. Essentially, Lisa sees this 13-system plan and says the infiltration is distributed throughout the site, mimicking to the greatest degree the existing condition, which is it rains on the ground, the ground soaks the water in. In the proposed condition, or the, the new plan, her concern is that it's concentrating that down towards the, towards the back of the site and not, not being as good mimicking the, the existing, the existing condition. What I would just point out is the four, four systems that are noted with the X's on them were not proposed as infiltration. Those are solid pipe systems without any infiltration. There were two small, very small roof drain infiltration systems up in the front parking lot and a system down by Wetland A. So we still had, the most of our, our infiltration was happening down in the same, same area. So what, what we're going to look at is potentially reintroducing this system here in direct response to Lisa's query. And I think, you know, but not for the two small infiltration systems for the, for the roofs up front, which we can't do now that we lowered that site proximate to the water table. I think we'll, we'll get closer to, to a comparable recharge.
Do you have a sense of how much fill would be required to be able to provide those small chambers for the rooftop?
Everything is so, so connected. If I, if I bring that part of the site up...
Yep, everything else.
Then I affect the ADA connectivity to the back of the site, and I have to bring the back of the site back up. So it's, it's really a balancing test.
Point to the, the mixed-use development concept, that it wasn't just a residential use and commercial. So altering those elevations challenges DEP because you can only tolerate certain, I mentioned ADA.
I'm just trying to quantify, is it six inches? I mean, you're going to lower the site three to four feet, is it six inches we're talking in order to get that separation, or is it two feet?
We can, we can certainly...
Try to quantify that.
The problem, the problem with this is all the other parameters that we look at in stormwater, whether it's attenuation, the quantity of recharge, how much treatment we do, they're all quantifiable. It's, it says you shall supply this, and you shall match pre-development rates to here, and you shall treat to 80% total suspended solids. There's parameters, there's measurable calculations that we can do. With this notion of concentration of recharge in an area, and what Lisa brings to bear is the groundwater travel time from when it, we put it in the, put it equally distributed around the site to the wetlands, and when we maybe concentrate it closer to the wetlands, the travel time might be different. That's not, it's not measurable, it's not quantifiable, and it's also not required under the standards that we, that we do that. It, it leads you to, to try to mimic existing conditions, but she's pointing towards something that she or I cannot put a number on.
I'm sure we'll come to a good solution, so thank you. I think you put some good creative thought into it, so we're appreciative of that.
We appreciate your time.
Yep, good, thank you.
Okay.
Who's going to call in the morning? All online, who's going to call the modification?
Thank you again.
Okay.
So, I saw Suzanne out there. I don't know if she's, if the town manager's ready.
You need to send Lisa what you delivered.
So should we have a drum roll, or exactly 8 o'clock?
Do you want a very quick master plan update because that's last on the agenda?
Uh-uh.
Or no?
Let's see if Suzanne, if you...
Actually, I guess we Christine.
Not a couple of copyers. So this is the master document, I'm going to get the individual edits.
Every single one of the paid, some people's here tonight. Yeah. I guess it was pretty, yeah, so. So I think we should get started on the discussion about the marijuana overlay district and the town meeting and all these related subjects. I know the town manager is planning on coming, but I think we should get started on the discussion anyway. I know Mr. Johnson wants to speak, but Suzanne, I want to sort of, you know, get your view of what sequence you think is most appropriate to go through tonight.
So I've made a number of changes to the bylaw, and I have incorporated Ms. Lou's, Mr. Goldberg's, and the proponents' changes into the bylaw that are non-substantive. So we could go through those, and then that would sort of get rid of any further, like you, it would alleviate the need to then go through those other, you know, the non-substantive changes at a later time, if you want to do that. And then the only things that are left on the table is the substantive issues.
Okay.
Does that help?
I mean, we have that, we also have to talk about this whole...
The timing.
About what happened last night and the timing and so forth.
That's true, and we could do that or we could wait. I know that the town manager wants to come and sort of give you an overview on that.
Okay.
So we can certainly fill you in and give you a broader review, or you can let the proponent do that, whichever you would prefer.
Well, I'd rather have the town manager here for that, if that's...
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be better.
Yep.
So I think it would be, with your indulgence, we'd like to go through and maybe just take a walk through this, and then, is everybody okay with that? And then we could talk about the timing and the schedule.
The only thing I would say is that there may be items of substance that there are questions about that also relate to timing, like, so, and maybe we'll get them...
Yeah, well, let's flag them and, yeah, so we can hold that. Yeah, okay.
And it, for me, I'm just thinking of a couple, and we can get to it after we go through this, that are, that actually probably aren't even covered in here, that we still need to kind of talk about and discuss.
Yeah.
That I think we were putting off discussion of until we had to talk about town meeting, which now we have to talk about.
Yeah, okay, good.
So the document that I handed out to you was the very latest document, so approximately 5:46 PM today, and I put that in the top corner, and that is what I'm...
Can you put it up on the screen?
So that's what I'm referring to, is kind of the master document. As Suzanne said, she's incorporated a lot of other edits, and I will hand those out once you get through this, the, the other edits that were proposed.
So I'll just go through it as a broad overview as to what has been changed, what we can wait. Okay, is it up? So the most, I think the, the, this biggest changes is the 8:14:06, and that, and that's on page, page four of the bylaw. And so what I've done is on, there's been, there's been a lot of discussion in the board, amongst the board members, as to whether or not you want to have that tiering aspect or the, sort of the percentage of proportionate space tied from cultivation to research and development. So we put, I put in a few of different suggestions, and one of them, after talking to Ms. Lou's, was this notion of a, sort of a performance bond, where they, the applicant would submit their application, and there would be specific conditions on that, and they would also submit a performance bond at the same time so that the town could exercise that bond to ensure that there's compliance of those conditions. And there would be an annual inspection of the premises, and they would also have to provide the information regarding the annual state license renewal application. And then similar to, I think what's in the proposed regulations, is a requirement for a bond to be held for the cost of dismantling an AMU when that, you know, when the business is, ceases to operate. So that's one approach to it. The next, the, that's on subsection two. Subsection three, I kept in that language on tiering since there's been no discussion or decision about that. And then the next is the subsection five and six, and that's the percentage of the proportional space from cultivation with research and development. And I know that Mr. Goldberg has suggested specific numbers, you know, what's going to be that proportion, is it going to be 25%, 10%? And that sort of, I didn't include those. I left that blank so that you could have that discussion.
Where are you on that specific grade?
That's on page five, subsect, or, yes, subsection six.
Okay.
Do you have that?
I have a question, so...
I guess I had a Jennifer, was, was your thought that number two would replace number four and five?
Yes. So what I was thinking when I proposed this, I went back and looked at some of what we have done in other bylaws, zoning bylaws for, in different places and how we've addressed serious concerns, and I actually was drawn, don't laugh, to the cell phone tower bylaw because we've spent a lot of time on that recently. But one of the things that we, that the bylaw there does is it sort of acknowledges the potential for problems down the road that are unforeseen, and they deal, the bylaw deals with that by putting in place a bond structure and this sort of insurance to make sure that things are going as the board expressed, when they grant the special permit. And rather than setting up a tiering system, which to me felt very artificial to put some sort of maximum floor space or square footage on, I thought setting up a provision where we have some sort of assurance that all of the serious concerns that we have are being followed by having that inspection right, by having... And rather than setting up a tiering system, which to me felt very artificial to put some sort of maximum floor space or square footage on, I thought setting up a provision where we have some sort of assurance that all of the serious concerns that we have are being followed, by having that inspection right, by having that bond, that this might be a better way to approach than doing the tiering. So, that, that was my thought in this approach.
What would the process be?
How would the amount of the bond be determined?
Well, I think, the way it's written right now, it's sort of, you know, I think it would be proportional to whatever the size is, right? And I, my, I don't think it's really specified here, but my expectation is if somebody wants to come in and propose a million square foot facility, that's going to be a much bigger bond than somebody that's going to propose a smaller facility.
I imagine we'd have to look at, so, I just say, I like this approach, I really wasn't in favor of the square footage limitations, but I think what we do, I mean, I think we have some flexibility when we set performance, when we set bonds right now, but what I would say is that with this kind of provision, plus this, all the special permit criteria that we put in, when you actually get an application, and it tells you the plan, and tells you what the odor control is, and tells you what the water is, and we ask the question, okay, you guys go bankrupt, or this stops working, how much is it going to cost us to fix this? That's going to give us a pretty good estimate of where we're talking about in terms of the bond.
For a facility that maintains operation, how do you establish a cost for what it would take to control odor in this, in this instance here?
I think...
It could cost a little, it could cost a lot. The performance bond is, is meant to cover, cover that, to solve that problem when the property owner can own.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's more difficult to do for something like this than it is for subdivision, because in the subdivision, all we do is trot out a bunch of rules and formulas about how much it is for roadway, how much it is for this, it's pretty easy to come to a reasonably close number. This is an imperfect science, I mean, I think, to some degree, and, you know, the, obviously, the biggest one is if the thing went totally belly up and it had to be taken down, you're probably talking seven figures, easy. That's, we may need to tie this in with the advice of, I think, one of the things that, I want to go back and make sure we have sufficient coverage, is in the same way we've had, you know, we just, we just had this hearing where we had our drainage consultant. We, we need the ability to hire specialized consultants for projects like this, and I think consultants, that's exactly the kind of question we would ask our consultant.
That is...
Part of 8.14.9, it says that a third-party consultant may be employed to provide analysis of whether the application and the specific siting requirements meet the best practices of the industry and are designed to have minimal detrimental impact on the community. I mean, I think, if we could broaden it, but I think as part of that, then I think, I think we'll have the tools we need.
Yeah, I think between the two, but I, yeah, I definitely like this approach better. I, I think the only thing that I would do is I could, you know, it was sort of my idea to have the phasing, but I think the applicant, you know, for the specific project made a compelling case, is there are certain things you do once, and you do it at the very beginning, you don't do it by square footage, it doesn't make sense to push them in that direction, so I'm, I'm okay with that. The one other thing that I would do is potentially include someplace in the thing that is part of the application, they have to come in with a phasing plan, a schedule, at which they're going to do it, yeah.
So, sort of what we had discussed earlier, construction management plan, when the sequencing and the timing, and I did put that in here, but not, just not in this particular section.
In that section, yeah.
Yeah, so that's more in the conditions and the application.
Because that says, if you're going to do it at a certain point in time, and if it doesn't happen, it gets delayed, you know, we have recourse to come back and...
Right, and the remedy in that is just that all operations cease and desist until it's brought back into compliance, if they are not in compliance with that construction management plan. Yeah, so you have two, so in the bylaw, as it's sort of been evolving, you have two sections in there that it looks at whether or not there's compliance, and what's the remedy for the town, so it would be a bond and also a, sort of, the cease and desist of the operations until it's brought into compliance. All right, and so, I just, oh, go ahead.
So, I mean, I don't know if we should kind of vote on things or talk about things, so, I mean, if we went with the approach that we just discussed, then two would be, so, in 8.14.6, we would keep number one, we would keep number two, we would keep number three, four and five would be eliminated, and then six is the provision about reserving a certain amount for research and development. I liked that idea, I think the applicant was on board with it.
So, do I, what was the numbers?
I had thought 15%, and that would just stay a steady number, so when you come in originally with, I said 15, right, yeah, 15, you come in originally, this is our space, this is the, you know, we're coming in, and again, we're just using a million, because that's the kind of numbers that are thrown around, we're a million square feet, so that means 150,000 square feet is reserved, it doesn't have to be put right away to use, but this is going to be where R&amp;D is. If you ever come back and have another 200,000 square feet of cultivation, then you need 15% of that, another 15% for R&amp;D.
But what do we mean by R&amp;D spaces, that office space included, or the strictly laboratory space, that could be perceived a couple different ways?
Well, how would you, good question, yeah, how would you, if you were to do it, how would you do it?
Well, I've, I've worked on a few laboratory projects, and they're, we qualify that with having some office space.
Yeah.
And, and so, I would read this section as including that office space, now, the...
But not office space associated with the cultivation activity, right? Would it exclude that?
Well, in the, in the laboratory projects I've helped construct, they, the offices are research and development on, it's for the laboratory, so it's just a step out of the lab, work on a computer, so, so, it, well, I guess that's an open question, as to these offices, how would they be used if that were included?
Office spaces, because some of the use might be more officey than, you know, than big lab, I mean, it could be both, but it would seem to be you would exclude office space associated with the cultivation activity.
To me, it's something that is associated, either it's the actual facility that's part of something that's permitted, either through our special permit or our state, as research and development, so it's not, I agree, it's not office space for cultivation, if it's office space tangential or associated with a research and development, something that we've given a special permit to for research and development, then that meets it. It looks like the state is actually going to adopt pretty much something that, in line with what we've suggested about a research and development license, so something along the lines of that, not something having to do with manufacturing or cultivation, potentially, if it's a tangent to one of the medical, that, you know, I just have to be convinced that it's part of the, our research, you know, so it could be laboratory, it could be office space having to do with, in support of it, it could potentially be storage space in support of it, it just has to be associated with that research and development special permit or use.
Right, so, so I would suggest that there is a definition within the zoning bylaw of what marijuana research and development is, what that use is, and so, that, that proportional space would have to fall within that, that definition, that type of use.
Is that definition there now?
Yes, it is, yep, we have that definition.
And I think we could incorporate at some point, if the state regulations give a new license for research and development, incorporate that as well.
Right.
But, but I, I fully agree with Suzanne, that it's something that has to do with that particular license.
Aaron, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question is more clarifying, that, just making sure it's explicit.
Yeah, okay.
And I did one other, have one other question, it gets back to paragraph two, if I can digress for a moment. With subpoint four within paragraph two, dismantling, what do we mean by dismantling the AMU? Is, do we have a, a specific end result in mind when we use that term? Is that clearing out all equipment, this, that, that has been added from the current, you know, the existing condition as it exists today? Is, is it something less?
So...
Is it something more?
Right, so, you, so, when an applicant comes in for a special permit to, to construct the premises, to, to conduct the use on the premises, then when you say dismantling, you would think, okay, it's everything that they've done to create the use, and that would be similar, and this is very similar to your wireless cell tower bylaw, you, there's also in most of them, and I'm pretty sure there is in this one, also a requirement for dismantling of the cell tower, so that if the company leaves, and you're, the town is left with this cell tower, there's a bond that can be used to dismantle it.
Doesn't the cell tower, doesn't it provide a little description of what is meant by dismantling, doesn't, isn't there a short description on the condition that it has to be brought back to?
It could, and we could add one here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the point, is to clarify.
Yeah, because you, you, you could be very extreme in saying it has to match what the existing condition is today, but if they build out certain facilities, like with HVAC and mechanical plumbing, surely some of that stuff could remain in place.
It's a very good question, I, for one, would actually prefer to keep it broad, because I think we're, as a board, are allowed to interpret the bylaws that we write and draft, kind of, in a manner that we feel appropriate, and frankly, I don't know until I see what the use is, and what it is, what dismantling would be, it might be different for manufacturing versus cultivation versus a laboratory, I just don't know yet. So, I, I think it's a really good question to keep in mind, and hopefully, we actually never have to use it, but I would, I would be in support of keeping it broad, just because I think I'd rather define it at the time it becomes necessary.
So, the concern I have is some of the information that we saw from, or at least I saw from the Colorado experience, was suggesting that once a building was used for large-scale cultivation, that because of the oils that are, that the build, in their experience, the building could not be used for another purpose, that it could not be cleaned.
So, then you talk about demolition.
Well, I, I don't know if that's, I'm just saying that, that here, it's not a cell tower, it's not a standard manufacturing, it's a specific type for which there is limited experience, and so, how, how do we address that here?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it may not be a fair analogy, but I think what we want to avoid is all of the 50s and 60s styles manufacturing plants that ended up with sort of noxious stuff there.
Correct.
That had all the costs, ultimately, it was such a disaster, the cost got passed to the federal government, and it created all sorts of health hazards because the costs were so high. I think if you establish accountability for the person that runs the thing, to fix the results of it, you'll end up with a better...
So, in this instance, dismantling could also be construed as meaning cleaning?
Potentially, yeah.
Waste disposal?
I think it's as broad as, as the use requires, and I think Peter's point is a good one, that, that it could be extremely broad, but it could also be very limited, if it's just a laboratory, you just got to pick some stuff up and move it out, you know, but it could be broad.
So, I can do a little research on that and see what other zoning bylaws, and what, maybe they have some term in Colorado that they are using for the term of dismantling in terms of a marijuana establishment, and I'll include that, I'll, I'll put that in there, and you can sort of wrap it with that at the next go-around.
Okay.
So, the, the next section that...
So, are everybody okay with the 15%?
And so, the tiering is...
Take the tiering out.
Take the tiering out, okay, and the 15, put the 15% in, okay, perfect, thank you. So, the next section that has, that I've incorporated comments is 8:14-9, and that's...
8:14-8?
Yep.
So, we have some blanks here about lot sizes and minimum requirements and things like that, probably a good time to at least talk about those. So, I think these are tough as well, so I'm not sure if we want to set minimum lot sizes, leave that for waiting to see if there's any state regulations, or just adopt the minimum lot sizes for the underlying zoning, that may be a easy enough solution for now, and then if we find that we need to change it, to change that, I don't think at first we're going to have problems with minimums.
No, we're not going to have, the only, we're going to have problems with, part of the problem is we're thinking in terms of this one large facility, and in fact, we should think the exact opposite, we should think of other possible facilities, and what we would want to see is a minimum size and setbacks.
Right, and that's why I was thinking maybe just the minimum sizes that are already in play for the district itself, the under, for the underlying district, you know, because we're, this is all commercial.
Yeah, that's, that may be the cleanest way to do it, is that if it's an industrial, just default to the industrial minimum.
Right.
What do you think of that?
I'll add that in there.
Pretty bad.
All right, are we all set? Do you want to go on to 8:14-9?
Yep.
And that's the specific create, site review, and that's on page six. And Aetan had suggested a number of additional language for each of the different studies, and the board's ability to review that in terms of the reviewing of the studies with regard to the best industry practices, and hiring a consultant to review those reports. And so, I just incorporated those into, for every section. And in this...
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, the only thing I was going to add is that on page eight, that's where I added the construction management plan, that requirement for construction management plan, which would set out the sequencing, the dates, and the timing of the construction of the project. Okay.
80,000 is the minimum square feet.
So, what I was trying to do on these ones was just to make it, like, over abundantly clear that any laws that are passed regarding marijuana, medical or otherwise, you know, you're going to have to comply with those, any regulations that are passed from the state, you're going to have to comply with those, and that the planning board has the power to look at the best practices, and to get their department consultants to make sure that, to the best we can, the applicants are doing it right, and spell it out over and over again, so that it's not lost on anyone.
So, I have a question on subsection two on page six. So, the water use, so, if you look at the third last line of subsection two, it talks about evaluate whether the project is designed to minimize the project's impact on the public water supply. So, we had quite a discussion about this through the spring, and I, I have a couple of views about this, but one of them is something that we've come back to repeatedly, which is clarity. So, for example, not impact the public water supply as opposed to minimize could be an alternative, and perhaps that's too restrictive, but I'm not sure what minimize means.
I, I think it's in there to, just to your point, is that there may be some impact, but it has to be small, that, as we've been kind of promised, this project that's been talked about will have, is supposed to have no impact.
No, right.
To me, that, that would meet this.
Yeah.
But if another project, and I expect, frankly, I expect that of this project, because we've been told that.
Right.
If there's, but this may not be the only project, and there may be another something, another project, either on this parcel, or on another part, wherever that is granted, you know, I think we still talk about Holt Street or something, that could have a minimal impact, you know, or there may be some other way, so I think it's just, it's broad enough to realize that there may be some impact, but I still expect at least the project...
But I mean, one of the things that we can do, and why I'm not really too upset about using the word minimize, is that in our, if we see a project, and the applicant says, I'm going to do this, we make that a condition, and say, well, we're not going to draw on the water supply at all, and you say, can't draw on the water supply at all, or if we're going to draw no more than so many cubic meters of water a year, you put that in as a limit, and that's, that becomes a hard limit, and I think that's the best way to regulate it. Because then we can see based on circumstances that we can manage it most reasonably, because there might be a circumstance where you let somebody use the water supply, but it's a nominal thing, and you, you know, you just set a nominal limit.
Well, I think if in fact a condition is used, that that would be the most effective way.
Yeah.
If, if that's what's going.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we ready to move on, or do you have other questions about 14-9?
Oh, this is really good. I'm glad you did that, Eton, this helps a lot.
I have a question, I think it relates to paragraph eight of this section. Do we know if there's anything unique to these facilities where the building department would feel like they don't have a specific competency to review the construction when a facility is built out? And would we, would there, would, would the building department want some kind of specialized consultant to act in its behalf, if, if there is such a unique condition to the construction?
So I think what you're, what you're noting here is that I didn't include that language, the third-party review language, that's in all the other subsections.
Well, I was just thinking more of the, the construction management plan, I just, more just got me thinking about, well, certificate of occupancy, does, is there, does the building department feel comfortable with reviewing the stages of construction on such a facility? And if they don't, what, is it they don't feel comfortable with?
So...
Getting down that road.
So in terms of the planning board's jurisdiction under a special permit, within this bylaw, you have the ability to hire third-party consultants to provide that technical assistance, to review the submittals and to give you an objective opinion as to their submittals. And the building inspector under their own jurisdiction of the state building code, if they have concerns with how to review a building permit, that would be within their jurisdiction as opposed to the zoning. But I, but I think that you are sort of looking at something and noting something in the back that's coming up, is that I will need to include that language, Eton's language, on this construction management.
I mean, sometimes...
Just to make it, hold it to the same standard.
What we've done in the case of cell towers or retaining walls and so forth, we said we need a certification for structural engineer for certain things.
Mm-hmm.
For example, that begins to get at, something similar to that, so.
So the example that's coming to my mind when I hear this discussion, which I think is a great point, is we've been told that in this example, it's essentially a building within a building, and the inner building is, at least the examples we've been shown, is, is, is pretty much sealed and tightly controlled with anything going in and anything coming out. And I don't know that a typical building inspector has experience with that, and so the ability to have a consultant, you know, an engineer comment on the adequacy of that, I, I think...
This, this project would be, and I'm sure similar projects would be done under a controlled construction affidavit, which the, the developers' engineer would sign off on the adequacy of the systems after seeing numerous reports from the contractor.
Yeah, which is, but you, you might be, see, I don't know if there's a way to just make the language of third-party consultants slightly broader to say that it would be even postapproval in terms of some of the elements implementation, in the same way like we have a site monitor who makes sure
Right.
things are done right, that, you know, it would be similar to something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can add that.
Yeah.
That's, that's a simple one. And then on 814-10, I added the criteria for, from section 1031, which is the special permit criteria. And I just called that out specifically so that there's no question. Before, it was just referring back to 103, but I always like to have everything right in one document, so nobody has any question about that. And that's verbatim from the by, the existing bylaw. The next section is 814-11. And that goes to the findings of the planning board and what that, Eton suggested adding the same specific findings with regard to that site review, the specific site review conditions that we had just discussed.
So I know this is kind of, it's a little unusual to have things in two different places, but I think the point I'm trying to make is that we want the information upfront, like you're going to tell us part of your epic site plan, how this is all going to work, and then we actually have to find that you actually, you know, it's not just you told us, we actually have to believe it, that this is within the best practices and make those findings, because if we're not convinced that, you know, this is the appropriate odor mitigation, then we shouldn't be issuing a special permit. So this says you have to tell us in advance, and we have to find that it actually works or to our, the best that we can, you know?
Yeah.
That it's going to work and that we're satisfied. And if you've done all that, if you've given us all the information ahead of time, and then it's been vetted, and then we found that it works, then you can get your special permit. And it's a lot of, I, I think this is going to be a lot of work for the people that want to do it, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
And I included the constructive management plan in it.
I was going to say, is that?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, I did, I added that. That's one of the la, that's the last section.
Okay. Where is that?
That is Z.
You know it's a long thing.
On page 16.
Oh, you know it's a long thing when you're all the way up to Z.
Yes.
We didn't get to the double.
But partially why this is so long is because this is also just including the criteria under the existing zoning bylaw, site plan criteria, so we put that in here. This is, this is not all new findings for just a particular marijuana, but this is something that every, all applicants have to go through.
Yeah, okay.
And then the last change that was incorporated was the 814-4, and that is including the provision for using the security bond if there's a public nuisance created, to remedy that public nuisance.
Where do we define public nuisance?
Uh, we do not define public.
Defined by case, by case law.
Yeah.
You know what you have to do, Peter? You have to listen to Alice's restaurant to find out what a nuisance is.
So, and then, and I'm not going to go through the details of what words were changed, but where there was sort of, not necessarily stylistic, but to bring, to change the language I did, as long as it didn't change the meaning of what we had intended to do.
No.
Okay. And I did the same thing with the applicant's edits as opposed, but there are some edits here that they suggested, and there's comments that say, "Discussion with the board." And so those I left out, and we can leave that to the applicant to do, to have that discussion.
So, this is great. I mean, I think we continue to make progress on it. I think probably everybody's homework is to take just one last run through it and see if everything hangs together based on what we said tonight, and there's a few minor edits. Are you going to edit, maybe what you do is update it for things that we agreed to if, if there were anything. There were a few things, like, and then just give us another version of it, and then we'll make all of our suggestions off of that.
Okay.
Can we, can we hear the applicant's?
Suggestions, just so that we can consider those and then...
That would be, that would be fine, so.
Do you want to get the town manager first?
Well, let's see, we're, we're talking two tracks here. We're talking time and process, and we're talking the bylaws, so...
If our town manager can hold on.
I mean, we're, we're neutral to, to, you know, talk time and process and schedule, or we can finish up on this topic. Which would you guys prefer? Okay, you want to hear the town manager? Okay. So, just by way of background, we decided to begin the discussion tonight by taking another run through the bylaw before we talked about schedule, process, timing, and so forth. And now that everybody is here, let's talk about timing and schedule.
We're talking process?
We're talking, we're shifting process.
I got my process questions.
Yeah.
Appreciate you yielding your time. It'll make dinner a little earlier than expected, I guess. So I'm Andrew Mailer, town manager. For those folks at home who are watching, and those folks in the audience who do not know who I am, I want to talk a little bit about process. We had a citizen petition filed with the requisite signatures to call a special town meeting under Mass General Act, Chapter 39, Section 10, that compels the selectmen to hold the town meeting within 45 calendar days of that submission. That puts that deadline, I believe, on February 1st. The selectmen at the duly posted meeting last night made the decision to call that special town meeting for January 30th, within the 45-day criteria. The selectmen are also compelled to make sure that there is 14 days notice of a duly posted special town meeting. It's a little longer for a special town meeting than an annual town meeting, and therefore the select must have a completed warrant posted and advertised in the proper, means that we typically do that, 14 days prior to the January 30th date, which puts it at January 16th. You may know that January 15th is a holiday. The next...
Good question.
Sure.
So it has to be published on 1/16?
Yes.
So that would mean it would have to be submitted to the newspaper?
No, it's, it's not a newspaper advertisement, it's posted.
Just post, okay, so it's just a posting?
Publicly posted, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the 16th, the selectmen's next scheduled meeting is January 8th. They don't have a meeting scheduled prior to January 8th. So obviously, January 8th brings the requirement of opening a town meeting warrant, accepting the articles to that town meeting warrant, closing that town meeting warrant so that it's done in advance of that January 16th date. Obviously, no one has a real interest on making that posting on January 16th, just in case. The interest would be to, you know, beat that deadline by a few days. Obviously, from the selectmen's perspective, the more conversation, the earlier that the warrant's posted, the more public dialogue that can take place. And so therefore, on January 8th, that's what you should expect. And in terms of getting on the warrant, any article that needs to get on the warrant has certain deadlines to meet, some of which relate to the, the work of this board and the requirements of public hearings, and some relate to the duly noted special town meeting. So again, if we were to receive a citizen petition or some other communication to get on the town meeting warrant, after the selectmen have closed that warrant, it'd be remarkably difficult to get it on the warrant. So if the selectmen meet on the 8th, if for some reason a bylaw appeared on January 10th, the difficulty would be for the selectmen to hold a public meeting within the 48-hour notice period, open the warrant, make the amendment, close the warrant, and still meet that January 6th deadline. So we really don't want to get past the 8th, it gets extremely complicated to do so. Because the special town meeting is filed, and that was one article on the special town meeting, we received one of the 200 signatures required. There had been a special town meeting resident, excuse me, there had been a resident request, more than 200 signatures, to hold a special town meeting or an annual town meeting to add additional articles to that, that was filed a couple of weeks ago. And now that there's going to be a special town meeting, those particular articles will also be added to the warrant. So currently, we have one warrant article submitted as part of the petition to call the special town meeting, and two additional articles that are being requested by residents who took the option of saying, "If you want a special town meeting, these will be added; if you don't, they'll be discussed at the annual town meeting." Those two additional articles will also be part of the warrant. One of those calls for a ban of all five commercial categories of marijuana. The second calls, in essence, for a zoning amendment to make sure that that ban carries through zoning. Because there is a zoning article proposed on the warrant, which will be taken up on January 30th, you folks have a requirement for holding a public hearing. If this board has an interest to add anything to that warrant, then clearly, from our perspective, from the board of selectmen's perspective, that would need to be added in sufficient time to get by January 8th. It is, I think, in the broader interest of the public from a transparency perspective, however, that you honor the tradition of the community and hold three public hearings. It'd be my recommendation to you to do that. Do I understand the obligation that, the impact that has on the board? I absolutely do. So let's follow that timeline to a certain extent. We have one article currently that has to be handled as a zoning article, I spoke about that, and therefore you'll have to begin a process for public hearing. If Ms. Enright hits the paper with, by noon on Thursday, with publicizing the advertisement necessary for that particular zoning article, then that would leave you, if you want to have three public hearings, to have those meetings on the 9th, 16th, and 23rd. You're currently of January, because you need to have three, if you're going to, so following me along as to my recommendation about holding three hearings, in order to get that done, and have those hearings prior to the special town meeting, which is January 30th, hold your typical date, which are Tuesdays, then in order to get that done and provide the 14 hour, 14-day notice that is required, in that case, advertisement notice, the first time you could hold a public hearing would be on the 9th, and if you were going to hold three, it'd be the 9th, the 16th, and the 23rd. I would not recommend that if you're going to hold three, that you'd hold the 3rd on the night of the town meeting. I don't think that's a particularly safe practice.
I'm sorry, can I stop you for a second? So I just missed the beginning part of that timeline, so we have to, whatever zoning bylaw, we have to hold the public hearings on?
Yes.
We have to publish notice of that public hearing, what is it, two weeks ahead of time?
14 days, yes.
So to hit that 9th, we would have to publish notice by this?
Noon on Thursday of this week.
Okay.
I wanted to ask you a question, because one of the things that's still not clear to me is that the request for the special town meeting that came in just yesterday only had a buy, a request for the selectmen to do something or other, I'm not quite sure what it was.
It's good, well described.
But it didn't include any zoning.
Yes.
So...
There was a previous special town meeting, a citizen petition filed two weeks earlier.
Right.
Which was contingent upon one of two actions. If a special town meeting was called, then that petition kicks in, and those articles would be added to that warrant.
Yeah.
So when the petition was filed yesterday, calling for a special town meeting, then the previous petition, which had a sort of if-or type clause, automatically kicked in and meant those two articles promoted by those two petitioners would be on the next special town meeting warrant. So those two articles included
Those are five.
one general bylaw and one zoning amendment.
Which is a completely different one. Now take what we've just been looking at
Yes.
tonight. If we want to input some version of that onto this warrant...
Great question.
How do we do that? Because that's what we would have the public hearing about, really.
Yeah, so, it's a good question. Well, I, I think there's two methods to that, isn't there?
Yeah.
So one is that the petitioners who filed the so well-described petition yesterday with the article decide that based, they could decide on their own to amend that special town meeting warrant, to add zoning articles. They can do that by a hundred signature petition. Will they do that? I think that's a question for them based upon sort of further dialogue, and maybe that's why they've asked me to go first, I'm not sure. But if the zoning board were to decide, excuse me, the planning board were to decide that you wanted to forward some level of zoning, you still have your own public hearing requirements. So the question is, how many public hearings do you want to hold within the time to get to January 30th? And in either case, we would need that bylaw to the selectmen by January 8th so that we can include it on the town meeting warrant that they're going to open and close on that date. So if the planning board provides a zoning bylaw by January 8th, then we could get it on the special town meeting warrant. The only wrinkle to that, I think, from a transparency perspective, if we get it on January 7th, I would actually recommend from a transparency perspective, we would see it shortly after your January 2nd meeting, because I would want to put that on the agenda, and I would want residents to have access to that. So in a normal way, if you approve that on January 2nd, forwarded it to my office and said, "We want that onto the January 8th selectmen's agenda," it would be included on the warrant. The challenge to that is if I get it on January 3rd, your own challenge, really, not mine, is that if you're then advertising a public hearing for 14 days notice, you're not likely to have more than one public hearing on that zoning article, because it's not going to appear in the paper in time to have any more than one. And so that's your challenge, not mine, but if you want to hold the three public hearings and not do something highly unusual, three in consecutive days, unusual days trying to jam them in, then my recommendation is you would set those dates today to cover for the bylaw you already have to discuss, meaning the complete ban from a zoning perspective. Let the public know those are going to be whatever dates they are, I get, a suggestion is 9/16/23, and then let the rest of the process sort of catch up to hopefully hold those three dates. And whether it's the planning board who promotes the zoning articles, or zoning article, or whether it's a petitioner or these folks behind me who promote those, I would still encourage everybody to try to get three public hearings in prior to a special town meeting.
So it's my understanding that one is required by law?
Yes.
Can we, just kind of, kind of spitballing, so if we held a public hearing on January 4th, say it's a Thursday?
Yes.
Have a special meeting, have a public hearing on that date, and then we could, we could have a public hearing and legally make a recommendation to the board of selectmen to put a zoning article onto the warrant?
Yeah, okay, I'm following you along.
And then can we have additional hearings?
Sure.
Once we've already made that, just with public comment, public feedback, things like that, and then at some point, if we, when it comes to the special town meeting, if, if we've heard things from the public that we want to make changes, they can be made
Yes.
at the meeting, so that...
I'll go one step further, because that timeline's compromised anyway, because you can't get to January 4th already because of the notice requirement. I would say that an article could be provided to the selectmen as long as it substantially represents whatever the topic is, and the public hearing process can continue beyond that.
But we would have had to at least have one public hearing?
Statute requires that. Not prior to giving it to the selectmen, just before the town meeting hears it.
Not prior?
It's, no, it's prior to the, it's prior to the town meeting, not prior to putting it on a warrant.
Yeah, I mean, the, the level we have with our article is if, if you just play it out by what the process is likely to be, is that January 2nd will come in, and let's by what the process is likely to be, is that January second will come in, and let's assume that night we finalize, and we have a product we like, then what we would say to Gene is, "Well, let's have the public hearing as soon as possible after that." Well, can you do it then for the sixteenth, or would it have to be the seventeenth? You know, it's a little bit, we can't do the ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third. So that's, that's the whole problem. That's the whole problem that I personally have with this timing of this town meeting, is that the acceleration of the timing does not allow us to have a sufficient number of public hearings across the town that we would ideally like.
Can I ask you a question? So once we, if we say we're gonna, we want to submit our bylaw that we've been working on, once we submit it, is there still room for the language to get tinkered with as a result of the public hearings?
Yes.
So could we conceivably, and I'm not saying that we're necessarily there, but is there a way for us, if we say we've agreed basically on all of the substance tonight, can we, we're gonna recommend that as our changes are incorporated, based on our discussion tonight, this, we want this warrant in the town meeting, we can publish notice of it, and then to the extent that there were little minor things that were happening along the way, sort of, there were, I think, maybe one or two really small questions left, we can work through that on the second, or we can work through that at the additional meeting, so we can still hit the ninth, sixteenth, and whatever, the twenty-third?
Yeah, I think you have to nail it ahead. We should, I mean, every, just about everyone that's been significant since I've been on this board, we've always changed something. So the question is, can we notice something that we know is going to change slightly? If we do that, then you could do that tomorrow.
I mean, I would, I would prefer to, if we're gonna have public hearings on a zoning bylaw that deals with marijuana, I want to see all of the hard work that we've done, be debated, and talked about at the same time, because I think it's a disservice to our town if we don't. So that, that would be where I'm leaning.
So you're suggesting that you all make this decision this evening?
Yes.
I, I...
To notice.
So that you can notice?
That's the only decision it would be, it would be notice.
Yeah, I think that we've, we've resolved, I think all the last big substantive issues that we had on this were resolved tonight. I think we can walk through it again, but my, my suggestion would be that we approve this for a notice tonight, knowing that there may be one or two small things that we changed along the way, but let's get this on board with the schedule, even though it's not our preferred schedule, and it would have been nicer to have more time to play this out. I, I think we go in that direction.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be having to have these meetings regardless of whether this is on.
We're gonna be talking about it.
About the other one, we have to do about the other one, but this is really the one you want to have a discussion on.
Exactly, exactly. Why leave it, why leave it off?
Well, I mean, those two, we could have those two in the same night.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yes, I think that's the whole point.
That would be the point, right? The point is not to confuse folks by having one public hearing night and another public hearing night, right?
Yeah, because you want everybody there, the pros and cons, or you want all of them there and discussing it at the same time, yeah.
So under that suggestion, if it were posted, then what I would need is that when you get to the January second's meeting, or shortly thereafter, I would need substantially the zoning article that needs to be on the warrant, so it can be added to the warrant for the selectmen to put it on the warrant as part of the process to add and, to open the warrant and close the warrant on January eighth.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll notice with the edits tonight, we'll notice that for a public hearing on the, the ninth, but at the meeting of the second, we'll finalize the script and then give it to the selectmen, right?
Does that work?
That works.
Yes, so it will print on the twenty-sixth of December and the second of January for a public hearing date of January ninth.
Yeah.
And the notice just has to summarize what the article's about, and that they can come in and look at the materials to date. And so whatever version it's in at that point, we'll have available on the second if the public were to show up.
Yeah.
I have two kind of related... I, I think this is great. I mean, I agree that this is not ideal, I would have much preferred having a little more time, but we are...
I still have the discussion about why this has to be done now, but I think we can do it.
So I have a question on the moratorium. We haven't really discussed that yet. Would we need, I don't know if this is for Mr. Mailer or for Suzanne, would we need a separate warrant article saying that the moratorium is repealed? Would we put in a line in this that the moratorium is repealed, now that we have zoning in place? It would make sense to address that at this time, because if we pass, if a bylaw passes at special town meeting without dealing with the moratorium, then you have two things in place that somewhat contradict.
Absolutely, I agree. We could do it either way.
Okay.
I think on the wind, when we did the wind turbine version of this, it was a moratorium first, I'm not sure we actually took an article to repeal it. We may have placed it into the language when we, when we, when you guys adopted the zoning article. So there's, there's some examples to that, so I don't know if it's a separate article or not, I'll leave that to Suzanne.
Yeah, we have, we have it written.
Right, we can just incorporate it, put a sentence in there, that this operates to repeal the moratorium.
That was my thought, I just wanted to make, we hadn't talked about it, so just something we should break up. The other thing we haven't really discussed in detail right recently is the retail piece. So the bylaw that we've crafted honors the vote of the Board of Selectmen in not allowing retail and the craft cultivation. That will, will that be addressed? That will be addressed at the, I assume, at the special town meeting?
Yes, there'll be two, I have an...
There are two different articles.
There will either be two different articles, or one article creating a new section in the general bylaw, which will identify the prohibition or banning of the retail and the craft cultivation, that is decided if that's two separate articles, or one article with a new section of the bylaw, but both of those voted decisions of the Board of Selectmen will be on this special town meeting warrant.
So if that passes, that's easy, our bylaw can stay as it is. If it doesn't pass, then we have not dealt with retail in our bylaw.
Correct.
And then we are in a more tenuous position in terms of the moratorium. Do we keep a moratorium as to retail potentially and deal with it at town meeting? That could be a potential solution. I just wanted to raise that as a potential issue. I have no idea how people are gonna vote on it, but I think we should be prepared, because we haven't dealt with it in the bylaw.
We've had several conversations internally about how to navigate through that rather complicated situation, and we'll prob, we'll be providing advice back to the Board of Selectmen on how best to do that.
Fantastic.
John, what did you mean by discussion on why the timing has to be the way it is?
Well, I'm not, still not convinced. I've heard a credible argument about the magic of this April first date that forces, compels the applicant to apply for this permit now. Every, I, I'm just not sure I buy the argument, and I'd like to hear the argument about why April first is March first, and March first is February first, so it has to get done by the end of January, or else it turns into a punkin'. I, I don't believe it, actually. You know, and it's, it's no right to do it, but what bothers me is, the biggest single thing we wanted to do in this thing was to have the utmost in transparency. It's, it's the biggest thing, and if you, people feel there's funny stuff going on, parliamentary procedure going on, they're not gonna accept the result of it as much as if they had an open, transparent, public process, and this doesn't feel open and transparent. It feels like we're being backed into a corner. And I've yet to have a good explanation of why we have to do it now. We'll do it now if we have to, we've already said we would, but I just don't think it's the right way to go. I don't think it's the right way to get the long-term support of the town, you know?
Isn't that really in the laps of the applicant? I mean, seriously, because I don't disagree with what you're saying, but because it's already been before the Board of Selectmen, I mean, we have a date set, the petition was put forward, I mean, there is going to be a special town meeting, and I don't disagree with you, I, I don't. What I'm saying, it's, it's, it's not that piece of it, it's not our responsibility anymore, it's the responsibility of the applicant. So if the, if, if this project, people say, "I don't think so, because we don't like the process," that, that's not on us.
No, it's not on us. You're right.
Well, I don't necessarily agree that we throw up our hands. I think we do have a responsibility to discuss in a public environment, and if we have a concern, I think we have either an opportunity or an obligation to discuss that. So I would like to ask the town manager if you could offer us your perspective on this question about the April first deadline, and I agree with what the chairman said. If we have to do it, we have to do it. We, we understand that. But, you know, this board has said throughout the fall, echoing what the chairman says, that in the interests of all parties, including the applicant, it's important to have a full and fair public airing and education of the issues. And now it does seem like we're forced into a very compressed timeline in the dead of winter to reconsider at a special meeting, where attendance may be less than at a normal meeting, reconsider an issue that the town has voted down twice. And what is your perspective of this dilemma we find ourselves in? And what is your perspective of this April first date driving this behavior?
Well, as I'm, I'm usually prone to do, I'll probably regret my comments, but nonetheless, I'll give them to you. So a couple of things. First of all, I, several members of the staff here in North Andover have spent an extraordinary amount of time, these two folks being probably at the lead of that pile, but several others trying to understand the commercial marijuana question, the medical marijuana question, the zoning question, the regulation question. We've got folks in the room, probably have lobbyists sitting in meetings to understand what happens. I've got other folks who gives us, give us information, we look at national models. And the reality, Mr. Boynton, is I have no idea. I couldn't tell you, there's no disrespect to the folks and what they tell behind me, I have no idea. I have no idea what the regulations are gonna say, I mean, not in principle, but I mean, in sort of detail. I have no idea from a business perspective if these deadlines are fair or not. I've communicated privately, publicly to the board at the very beginning of this process, "Make your own timeline." I've said that to you, because, because it's not that I don't believe the folks behind me, I think we're in a really interesting spot, right? It's a new spot. So I don't know, because I, I would say to you, I'm not sure anybody really does. Maybe the Chairman of the Cannabis Control Commission, maybe a couple of the members may have a better idea. And even within that, the sort of nuance of the nature of the industry, it's a new industry, how it will be managed, we don't know who the people will be, who will enter that market, where the competition will be. So I think it's fair, even of the applicants, to say, "We don't really know." They have their opinion on how it's gonna lay out, others have their opinions, and I think that, that part is part of the reason we're here, because neither group can convince the other clearly about what exactly the future holds. If it was clear, we'd say what we would normally say, geez, the April first date is not relevant, the March fifteenth date isn't relevant, the April first, April fifteenth isn't relevant. We just don't know. And so in public process, when you don't have certainty, it's bad enough when you have certainty, right? When you don't have certainty, you end up in a little bit of this process. I would say with all that being said, the planning board has had a robust conversation dating back many months about this. And so from a public process perspective, not advocating for or against this bylaw, it would be argued that this bylaw has been discussed as much as many, if not more, bylaws than we've historically had. And so I think the public process in that regard has been as well-served as it can be, given the difficult constraints. Would it be my preference that you hold three public hearings? Yes. Would it be my preference that those not be in consecutive weeks, you know, within a compressed thirty-day schedule? Of course. And maybe if there was some agreement, because I don't think it's gonna avoid a special town meeting, John, I think maybe if there was some agreement that that special town meeting could be something other than identified by statute to give us three, or four, or five more weeks, everybody could agree to extend out the public hearing process, because the applicant would know we have a serious interest to take up the matter, and the public may be better served. But in the absence of, of that, sort of negotiated outcome to a special town meeting, which may afford more time, and I'm sort of speaking on the fly, I can understand if they believe it's April first, why they took the steps that they did, but maybe there's a compromise in between, that we have to have a special town meeting to meet their interests, and at the same time, can meet the public interest by not making you folks meet five times in January. But that's a question for the applicant, and ultimately, a question for the board. I, I don't control the warrant, the Board of Selectmen does, but, but it's, it's a question that's worth asking, I guess, if there's some interest to have the dialogue go longer.
So you know, to your point about the thoroughness with which this board has looked at this issue, I haven't been on the board as long as John, but...
Just John, you're just gonna say John.
Yeah.
You looked around, but it's just John.
Unfortunately, my brief tenure means I'm second in line.
You're second, yeah.
So do I think that we've had a chance to look at it carefully? I, I, I think we have, and I think the applicant has been responsive to that. But the concern is, which this board has repeated, meeting after public meeting, is the importance of publicly airing this. So even if the board has been thorough, the concern is, what about the residents? So as town manager, do you have an assessment of what percentage of the residents even know that we are reconsidering the question that they voted down twice?
I can tell you this, there was over two hundred signatures on the first petition that asked for a special town meeting, in case there was a special town meeting, there was more than, more than seven hundred and fifty signatures on the petition that requested the town meeting. So I, you know, I would say to you, my, this is, this is a personal opinion. I'd be shocked if the room were not filled in a way, we have the second largest town meeting that we've ever had, based on my, you know, sort of review of the record going back into May. I would expect that this town meeting is, again, I know it's a complicated time, so I certainly can understand others who may disagree. I'd expect this is not flying so far under the radar, this is gonna be a hundred and fifty people in a room. One, we never get a hundred and fifty people in North Andover, that's a good thing. So, but I, I understand the concern. It's, it's, it's a reasonable concern. I can look at the signatures and tell you what that feedback is, we can certainly conduct a survey and see what kind of responses there are. I think the dialogue has been ongoing, so there'll be a reasonable response. Again, I, I offer the possibility of some kind of compromise around the deadline, but, but that's for others to decide, I just offer it.
So this will be my last comment, which is my concern that I'd like to express to you as a town manager.
Yes.
That I am concerned, and this may sound counterintuitive, I'm concerned on behalf of the applicant in this regard. We have been, had an opportunity to work with this applicant since the spring, and I would argue that we've seen some highs and we've seen some lows. And I would argue that the high point, from my experience, was the site visit, where the applicant took the time and the expense to bring in experts in the field, to explain to us and show us what this involved. I think that was a great benefit to the applicant's case to get beyond perceptions and inform with facts. And today, I have a very different view, that I think the applicant is at a different end of the spectrum that could affect the credibility of the proposal, perhaps not even because of facts, but because of the perception that we seem to be jamming something in for what could be an artificial deadline, and if, if we have to do it, we'll do it. But it worries me about the credibility of the process here. So I really appreciate you mentioning the possibility of some type of negotiated timeline to give us the opportunity to finish the job, which is to bring those important facts to the attention of the public, which I think serves all parties.
To just sort of bifurcate your comments, though, it sounds to me that's specific more to the hearing process, because quite frankly, given the time you've been discussing it, and the brief time that I spent in the room while you were reviewing the bylaw, it's not largely about the bylaw, Mr. Boynton, it seems to be about what happens next. And I would certainly encourage the applicant to hold another event, invite the public to the building, tour the building as a public, whatever steps, I think they'd be open to that idea. So I think that there is at least the opportunity to get into a dialogue. Sometimes in government, we get so stuck in process, I'm a process guy, by the way. I think you're a process guy, too.
Been there.
Right? So we get so, so stuck in process, we lose process for the public engagement. So maybe there's an opportunity to do both. Maybe there's a tour of the facility, I think they'd probably be open to that, and maybe there's a further dialogue that finishes the process you identified, because what I'm hearing is not that the conversation of the board, which sounds robust and thorough, is not nearly complete. It sounds to me like the conversation is what happens next, to make sure the public is aware of the town meeting and what it's going to be discussing, and can provide their input. So maybe, there's a lot of folks in this room, and I would think the board would be equally engaged, the Board of Selectmen, to have a conversation that allows to balance both. It may not happen, but in the end of the day, as long as everybody knows its sort of own endpoints, this group, I'm assuming, is gonna want to get to the town meeting before the annual town meeting, your goal is to reach out to more public, maybe there's an opportunity for the kind of conversation that yields that kind of return. I, I leave it to smarter people than I to make that decision.
Maybe we could put the applicant on the spot now.
There you go. I set you up nicely, didn't I?
Thank you, Mr. Mailer.
Yeah, thank you.
I've sort of ceded my time, and I guess I will completely, now I will completely...
To the gentleman from...
Now, we're completely seated. I had an elegant speech. It's very long, but it's very, very elegant. I will skip that because what I really would defer is my two partners here, because we can speak about the credibility of the April 1st date, John, that you brought up, and we have Mr. Attorney Rosen to talk about that, and we have Mr. Leary to talk about the warrant article and some of our thoughts about what you all have been talking about for the last minute, okay?
Who wants to go first?
So, I'm just, I'm going to leave. That's okay? If you feel my involvement is needed at any point moving forward, you know where to find me.
Can I compliment you first? You stole half of what I'm going to say, so thank you.
I want that on the record.
On the record. Attorney Michael Rosen on behalf of 1600 House Street LLC. So, I would like to echo pretty much everything that the town manager said. I think at the end of the day, this has been a robust process, and we do truly appreciate everything that everyone has done. At the same time, we balance that against our business interests in this industry, and it's a new and burgeoning industry. There's a lot of gray out there, not everything is black and white. There's going to be a 15-day window in April where they allow priority applications, and those priority applications are going to go to RMDs that have a provisional certificate of registration. We want to be one of those RMDs. We want to have a provisional certificate by April 1st. We work back from that date.
Okay. So, first thing is, what does having a provisional certificate April 1st mean? What do you have to, where do you have to be by April 1st?
We have to be through the Department of Public Health and have received our provisional in our siting profile. We have been invited to siting profile, but we are waiting to submit to siting profile.
That's for which application?
An RMD, registered marijuana dispensary.
Okay.
If you have a...
So, that's the medical.
If you have an RMD on April 1, if you have a provisional for an RMD on April 1, you get in that very first pool, which is only open from April 1st to April 15th, and it gives you priority registration. It essentially accepts the majority of your management operation profile and your submissions to the DPH to have an expedited review to allow you to get into the business and into the industry sooner. Those are the people that are going to be able to start on June 1 with their, the operations in their facilities, and those are the entities that are going to be able to start selling on July 1. And that's our business goal, is we want to be a first mover. That's something we've been saying for about a year now, is that we would like to capture first mover advantage. So, in order to be ready for April 1, the Department of Public Health, they have a timeframe in their published protocols, and they say that eight weeks from a completed application. What we did is, we then went into their protocols and we compared them to approved PCRs, like the last, I believe, 20 we looked at, and we looked at the average number of days to approve those PCRs, and the average number of days was in the mid-30s. So, we feel as though while they, their stated return is eight weeks from a submission of a complete application, we believe we can get it shorter. We've seen some as short as 20-plus days. We've seen some that have taken as long as 70-plus days. Our goal is to try and get it in in less than the eight weeks, and we're hoping we can get it done in 30 days or less. Knock on wood, we hope we can do that. We also recognize that from the time the town meeting closes, the clerk has to certify the town meeting warrant and has to submit it to the Attorney General. The Attorney General legally has 90 days to approve a town meeting warrant. We recognize and understand that when it's a special town meeting, there are less warrants on the pile than there are on an annual town meeting, and it's our belief that, after discussing this, that those special town meeting warrants have the potential to get approved in 30 days or less. I understand we have a zoning warrant, and as a matter of law, under a zoning warrant, an applicant can move forward at their own risk. Knock on wood, hopefully that the Attorney General does not reject the warrant for some reason. However, at the same time, the town has a moratorium, and there is a general bylaw warrant moving forward to discuss the allowed and the banned uses within the town. So, we feel as though the safest steps for us are to make sure that that gets through the AG process. We don't know what will happen if we submit to siting profile to the DPH while the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws are pending in front of the Attorney General. So, we feel as though we need a minimum of 30 days with the AG. We feel as though we need a minimum of 30 days with the DPH, maybe even longer. And so, that takes us back to February 1, which is why we moved forward and did what we did. We don't, we mean no disrespect by it. We appreciate everything everybody's done. We hope you recognize, and I thank you for recognizing, that we brought people to the site. I think Mr. Mailer made a great suggestion of the public hearings that you would hold if you do hold them according to that schedule in January. We would love to host one or two of them at the property and open the property for the public and allow the public to tour the property if they want to see it, and we can have all the boards, and we can have as many of the people because the people are coming from different parts of the country and even outside the country.
So, just on that, I think that should be something separate than the public hearings that we hold, so...
We can do it.
I think that in looking at the new draft regulations, they talk about a, you know, applicants hosting the community at an event, you know, outside of the public hearing process. So, I think, you know, you guys set that up however you want, but I think it's a, it was a really good idea to have something outside of this process, and I agree with Peter that seeing the facility was helpful, so...
Absolutely, positively. That will be part of our community outreach. I offer it if the Planning Board would like to host a function there, but we will, we will be doing that ourselves as well. So, that's what brought us to the timeframe.
So, you're saying in order to be in the queue by April 1, which basically means they'll act on your application by the 15th of April?
By June 1, they will issue the first round of licenses. The queue opens on April 1, the priority applications close on April 15. In that 15-day period, they are then going to process...
So, it's an open window of 15 days.
For those 15 days.
So, it's really the magic date is from the 1st to the 15th.
Correct.
So, you're saying that if you don't hold a special town meeting before February 1, that doesn't give you the Attorney General window. In order to file your application, you have to have the zoning in place.
We're not 100% sure what we have to have in place. I mean, there have been some suggestions that if we had a non-opposition letter, if we had a host-community agreement. Until you get into the process, we don't really know. As I said, and I believe what your town manager said, this isn't black and white, it's gray. So, we're trying to analyze as best we can. We at one point had tried to negotiate with the Board of Selectmen on getting a host-community agreement and a non-opposition letter in place. We thought if we could do that, that that might help us get through the siting profile process. However, the Board of Selectmen made a determination that they wanted to stop negotiating on those items until the planning process was done, which brought us back to the planning process. So, it's a little bit of a catch 22.
Because I'm trying to figure out why we couldn't have the town meeting at the end of February as opposed to the end of January.
Because if it takes the Attorney General 30 days or longer, and then it takes siting profile 30 days or longer, then we won't have our ability to apply to the DPH until well after April 15. So, if we did it at the end of February and it took the AG 30 days, and then it took the DPH six weeks, we'd be March, April 15.
Now, what's the DPH part?
Department of Public Health. We have to have our RMD provisional certificate of registration to get into the priority pool.
Can I just interrupt and ask a question, too, that has, that I've been trying to understand? It's my understanding that the law is that you have to have a medical, a provisional certificate, and you have to be operational in order to be eligible for the priority review. And so, everything that you're laying out is just in terms of having that registration, that license, but you don't get to the point where you're saying, and we also have to be operational in dispensing to a qualified patient. That was my understanding of the law, but I haven't heard that from yours.
That's an excellent point. There were two provisions in the law, and the provisions were inconsistent. And when the CCC met and laid out the regulations, it is now an or, and so it's 1, 2, or 3, and 3 is just the provisional. So, we would qualify under provision number 3.
So, the regulations have not been drafted yet, is my understanding, under the CCC regulations?
Correct. They were vote, they were voted on by the members of the committee. We had our lobbyists there at the room when it took place, and you can go to their guidelines and their guidance, and you can get written evidence that this is what they have agreed upon.
Okay.
Those regulations won't be final, but again, like I said, this is all gray. It is not black and white. We are going...
But I just wanted to establish that that's what the statute states, right? The statute is the one that says you, in order to get priority review before that April 1, it's you have to be operational. And so, what you're, I think what you're telling the board now is that the regulations are going to be changing the law, but those regulations have not been adopted yet.
Actually, the statute says both, and there was an inconsistency in the statute. So, one of the things we discussed when we met with the CCC was that there was that inconsistency, and the commissioners knew that, and they knew that they would address it in the regulations.
Okay.
So, February 1, Attorney General approval, and then this approval, this siting approval you're talking about. So, it's a, is that an arduous exercise through the siting approval, or is it pro forma?
Well, they say they need up to eight weeks. As I explained earlier, we looked at the last batch that they did, which I think was about 20 of them, and on average, they got them done in 33, 34, 35 days. So, again, knock on wood, we're hoping we can get through it in 30 days.
And then you go into the queue.
And then we go into the queue, exactly. Yep. And again, I don't want anyone, any misperception. It is not black and white. We are trying to weigh our respect and appreciation for everything the board did against what we perceive as an important business determination that we need to make because we want to be in the first mover position and be in the queue between April 1st and April 15.
Attorney, can I say that?
I don't see it as, any disrespect to this board, I actually agree with Mr. Mailer that I think we've had a really good discussion, and I think we have a really good bylaw. But I share Mr. Boynton's concern, and it might, the concern, the way I see it, is that if this is going to pass, I think it needs to be the recommendation of the Planning Board and not from the applicant. So, but, but not, not just in terms of technically, the perception is equal, if not more important, than who actually submits it. If it looks like it's something that the, that the applicant is pushing and saying, okay, we have our bylaw that the Planning Board is going along with, that doesn't sit well. It doesn't sit well with me, and I'm pretty sure it doesn't sit well with the town. We spent six months going and making this a comprehensive bylaw that talks about marijuana in the town and not just with your project, and I think I'm very proud of that. And I think that that's what's important and needs, if it's going to pass, needs to be relayed.
I agree with you 100%.
But this seems to undermine that.
I, well, if I...
That's the perception.
If I could explain, we believe there need to be six warrants. You'll note that we filed for a special town meeting, and we only included one. And we only included one for a reason, and what you just said is exactly the reason. We would prefer you finish it. We'd like to do everything we can to help you finish it. We come to every meeting, we prepare for every meeting, we have some input that we'd love to sit and share with you tonight. We want it to be yours. We think you've done a great job. We, with very minor comments, and in fact, you resolved many of them this evening, we're on board with you. We want it to come from you. We were not so bold as to put all six warrants in our town meeting request because we did feel as though that would undermine what you've done. Do we have one drafted? Yep. Are we ready to go if we had to? Yep. But we would much prefer it be yours, and we would much prefer that we do what we can do to help you get it across the finish line, including holding public hearings, having tours at the facility, doing public outreach, public meetings. We truly do appreciate what you guys did, and we think you did a fantastic job. Staging, I think, was our biggest concern, and I think you came up with a fantastic resolution for it this evening.
So, I have to say, I still have a concern for all parties. You know, the town voted this down. I think the Planning Board did not have to hear you for two years, but in good faith said, we want to hear the facts. And now the perception is, perception, at least from my perspective, the perception is, we acted in good faith, and now some sort of very short notice, special meeting, dead of winter, that's not a good perception. But if that's what we're required to do, of course, we have to do it.
I don't have an answer for you. Hopefully, the people that support our project don't buy into that perception. If there are people out there that do, then that's a risk that we take, and it's potential risk that, that the applicant takes in moving forward and asking for the town meeting, and we analyze that as part of our thought process over these last couple of weeks.
And you know, through, through all these meetings, we have encouraged full, open engagement with the town so that there's an opportunity to bring the facts forward and avoid misperceptions. So, we're in kind of a funny position here where I'm kind of agreeing with you that this was our objective in acting in good faith, and I think the process has been put in a very difficult position.
Hopefully, the public will not agree with that. We recognize that's a risk we're taking.
Well, I think you clarified, you explained to me what the sequence of steps is with some level of clarity about the driver, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I do share Mr. Boynton's concern because it's even beyond people perceiving if, you know, we put a lot of effort into this. We'd like to see, I think this thing work, we obviously would like to see it pass, but I want everybody in town to feel that they were properly served in the end because I don't want to have this thing pass and a very substantial number of people in town still feel that they've been had on it. And that's really important to me, that it is perceived as open and transparent and is possible. And, you know, maybe that means your work is even more cut out for you over the next month and a half to create some of that transparency. I think more time would have helped, but, you know, if that's not the way we're going to go, we'll, we'll have to deal with it.
I mean, it's important to note, we submitted knowing there was an opposition petition with 250 signatures on it. So, we do understand, we have our work cut out for us. We do believe that a majority of people in town are informed and well-informed. We do believe that there's a robust opposition group that is going to speak their piece, and we expect them to. And we believe that there's a robust support group represented by the 750 people that we got to sign our petitions. So, we believe that it's informed, we believe it's out there, and, and again, we recognize that there is a risk that we called the town meeting. We truly do, and we appreciate your candor and your feedback. I think at the end of the day, when balancing all factors, the decision that my clients came up with was, we need to be ready for April 1.
Okay. Good. Fair enough.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think if it's okay with, with the board, I think Dan and I would like to sit at the table and walk through the bylaw with you. I think we kind of jumped to the timing with the recognition we were going to go back to the bylaw.
Okay. Fair enough.
And I don't think we're going to need a lot of time, but, okay.
Do you want to speak to the one that you submitted, or are you getting on to a new version?
So, I am going to speak to the one that Suzanne submitted, and I am going to add comments from the version that we previously submitted to you that you have on the website. So, I don't have anything...
The version that you submitted, please.
Yeah. Yep.
The version that you submitted.
No, I don't need it.
It's just the supplemental.
No.
M. Robbins, Michael Rosen said.
So, I think what I'd like to do is so that you, you don't have four different versions in front of you, is I would like to go off of Suzanne's version from tonight. I think that's the easiest thing. I think she put in a lot more work into it, and I think that's, our goal all along was to use your version. What I'm going to do is I'll turn pages, and on anything that we saw new tonight, if we have some comments, we'll let you know. And then we had some prior comments in the version we submitted, so I'm going to turn my pages. I'm going to turn two so you don't have to. If I had a comment, and I still have that comment, I'll explain it to you, and I'll let you know why. Okay. So, the first one is in the boundaries of the property. So, in one of your versions, you changed the definition of the 500-foot setback. Instead of from lot line to lot line, you went from building or structure to lot line. By doing that, you made it easy for us in that we didn't know, not any longer have to subdivide our parcel, we could leave our parcel whole. We had originally carved out last year these blocks in the corners of our parcel to do anything we possibly could to save other uses, such as potentially the soccer fields and the ball fields. So, we would like you to use the version of the bylaw that Suzanne had posted last week that talks about building to lot line, and then what we would do in 8.14.3 is that we would just, Sub District B would just be playing map 34, lot 17. And we think one of the other warrants needs to be a zoning map amendment, and we have a prepared map 34...
a prepared map 34 lot 17 in the form of a zoning map amendment that either we could submit or the town could submit, but we have it prepared that way. If, if...
We go to 8.14.
8.14.32?
Yes.
Okay. So, just filling in those blanks?
Yep.
Can you repeat what, what you suggested?
It would be, the boundaries of Sub District B are shown on zoning map 34 parcel 17.
And then we would not need the rest of that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We just like period, end of that section.
Correct, it would be the same as Sub District A, it's just identified by an entire parcel. And then we would have just a simple, one of our warrants we could submit is just a plain boundary of that parcel.
And that's also referenced, 3417 is already referenced in...
Yes.
The introductory paragraph of 8.14.3.
Correct, and that's the only one that's not in Sub Paragraph 1.
Okay.
Okay, the next comment is in 8.14.4, Sub Paragraph 9.
Let's just go back to talk about the boundaries for a second, because what we have here for the boundaries is that we are including the existing MMOD and this parcel, the Osgood Street parcel. So, when a zoning map amendment is created to create a new district of an MOD, it has to include both of those parcels. So, that is something that we have to make sure that we, we do and understand, so if you're gonna submit just one for your parcel, then the, we will, as the town, have to submit one that incorporates that. Just want everybody to understand that. Is that clear? Okay, so, sorry. Didn't make any sense, all right.
They have a zoning map article just for their property, but there's the other, there's the subset that's type, right now, the medical...
The Holt Road, the Holt Road parcel. Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Why don't we just all include it in one paragraph? I don't understand why we would just do the, now, now I'm really confused.
It's a separate warrant? I'm sorry.
That means the A and B.
No, I think, I think, I think there are two separate questions, so we can change the, the 8.14.3, paragraph 2, to add, to make it 34 parcel 17, and then have a separate zoning map that includes both A and B.
Exactly, and I just want us to note that that's what we have to do.
Which I think should be submitted by the town.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So, we, we can take our map, and we'll send an electronic version of it over to the town? Okay.
Okay.
The next comment was 8.14.4, Sub Paragraph 9, on the marijuana research and development. It's a question of what that license might look like by the commission, so we would just want to add, at the end of that, comma, to the extent applicable. Technically, right now, there is no license for marijuana research and development. We do expect it to be included in the regs, but it is not one of the subcategories right now, so it may be a licensed, it may be something short of a license, so we would just want it to be clear that it was...
So, but I think the purpose of this was actually to the, to grant the planning board the power to give a special permit to something that isn't licensed by the state.
Correct, and, and because this says "and" is licensed by the commission.
Right, so I think, I actually think that we should take that out.
That's okay as well.
So, prototypes in technology...
Period.
Period, right.
Okay.
And my thought is that if the regulations come up with a new license, then that's something that we add later on, maybe at the, at the regular town meeting, we add it, you know, as, as a new license type. I can go for any new license types.
Correct.
The next comment we had, and I do think you addressed it, is in 8.14.6, on the language in subsection 2 that you added. You know, we were thinking about the term dismantling as well, I forget, Mr. Preston, are you the one that asked what it, what was, what did dismantling mean? Because I do believe that if we install something that is conducive for indoor agriculture, that it is possible that it could be put to another use at some point in time. So, I, maybe the broadness with which you answered that, which is you would address it, I guess, when it comes to the time to close down, but, but I do think it's an interesting question, so it was one on our list as well. In subsection 6, you added the question for research and development. We agreed with your analysis there, that was gonna be one of the points we brought up. We do think that there's a good chance that there'll be office-related activities, to the extent a company comes in so that it's not my client doing the research and development, it's an independent company, they may have their offices, they may have a CEO, a CFO, a hiring department, so they may have all of the ancillary office space related to their research and development use. So, thank you, I think, Mr. Preston, that one might have been yours as well. Is that where you were at? Okay, so, yeah. Okay. On, on 8.14.9, you talked about the concept of having independent review, and there was some debate about whether or not it would be done by the building inspector and the building department versus whether it should be done as part of the planning board process. I might suggest that you put an "and/or" in there because, in fact, some of the things are actually being peer-reviewed by the building department so that maybe you wouldn't have some duplicity because they are, the building department is peer reviewing some of the stuff, in fact, right now.
Well, do you say that we may engage third-party consultants? If we've already had the work done, then we might not need to.
Do you want to say the planning board "and/or" the building inspector?
I don't think we should talk about the building inspector, really, on zoning.
Makes sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next one is in 8.14.10, and it is in Sub Paragraph... Is it 2 or 3? No, because the numbering changed. Oh, hold on a second. No, come on ahead. Sub Paragraph 3. Some of your AMUs might not require a provisional final registration or license. So, for instance, right now, research and development may not have a provisional, a final, or a license issued by the commission, but it is defined as an AMU under your bylaw, so we might want to end 3 with "to the extent applicable." And then the other comment we had was, we would like the ability to move forward with a special permit, knowing we can't open and commence business until we would have all of the approvals in hand, but if we got both a non-opposition letter and a host community agreement from the town, we would, under 3, like that to be an alternative to allow us to at least start the special permit process.
Are any of these allowed to be waived?
Not within this, this section.
Just in general?
So...
As parts of applications?
Right, so we had this discussion at the, the last public, or the last town meeting, and I think, Gene, you, you, do you want to address that issue? Because I know that that was something that you...
It was just consistent with what the model zoning had been, in that we reviewed other town bylaws, and they were, again, the consistent language, that it was at the time. Originally, we had final registration, I believe. I think provisional registration is viable, I think when you get to that point, you would, you'd be in the position where you'd need a special permit from there on. But, again, we vetted it at the last...
And so, the, and I think the reason is, is because if you, if, you know, we've drafted this bylaw so that you're, the planning board is reviewing the information submitted to part of the license application process, so then if you all of a sudden switch your timing as to when you're reviewing a special permit, and you're not reviewing the information that's been submitted to the licensing process and compliance with the regulations, then the planning board is going first, right? So that, so then, as a land use board, you're going first as to whether or not they're gonna be a licensed applicant. And that's a decision you have to make. Do you want to go first, or you want to wait until somebody is a licensed applicant in order to submit their special permit application?
And the other requirements in the MMOD were, you had to turn in a lot of different certifications as approved by the DPH, and you wouldn't be at that point prior to...
So, but, but the question boils down to is, can we consider, I agree, first, first in this case is not good, but can we be at the same time, and to what extent can you be at the same time? Like, could you require, obviously, you would require your licensure at the end, but do you need it before they start? It's an interesting question, I don't know.
Because it's a determination that you would have to make as to whether you want to be the ones to review, do the technical review, to see if there's compliance with the state regulations.
I mean, I would rather we keep it, it's, it's obviously would be reasonable if something gets submitted, and it's gonna be heard in two weeks, and within the two weeks, we get the information, but if it's, if we're gonna go through the entire process without having that in hand, that's, that's similar to the, the thing we're running into with the, the cell tower and the ZPA, I think.
What's the timeline of original versus final?
Not 100% sure, but, so I, I think the concern is this, you're gonna want to bring in peer review, and that's gonna take some time, it's not gonna be a two-week process. So, we'd love to be able to commence, even though we haven't submitted the complete application, and obviously, if there's information missing, the peer review is gonna pick that up, and they're gonna say, well, wait a second, have you submitted this to the state yet? Where does this stand? So, we wanted, we were thinking parallel track, but knowing, obviously, that we couldn't get a final permit and a final approval until we've satisfied all the steps, but we, we wouldn't want to go through like four to eight weeks with the state and then come back and start the peer review process then. So, it's kind of a way of commencing the process but not completing it.
Wouldn't the peer review process be quicker, though, once you've already done with the state, because they could review that instead of starting...
I think we're hoping we would be submitting them simultaneously. I mean, the one thing is, the peer review might catch something that will help us on our state's side as well, and if we're paying the peer review to go through everything, it might make sense to have it all being done at the same time.
So, there's a lag from the filing of the application where peer review can start upon the filing?
Correct.
And a month later, the hearing actually opens, and so a lot of times, we, you know, the peer review starts immediately, and you pick up a month before the hearing even opens.
So, maybe something simple is saying, an application can be submitted and commenced, but is not deemed complete until the following are submitted.
So, my only concern is, obviously, with special permit timing aspects. So, we don't have anything in this section that specifically takes the review process out of the normal structure of Chapter 48, so you have all the constructive approval, and you have all sorts of timing aspects that the board really has to be aware of because you, you hear, I'm sure, enough times when you have an applicant come before you and say, oh, this is taking you so long, you know, this is unfair to us because your review process is taking so long. So, we just don't want to set up a position through our bylaw where that's happening.
Yeah.
Where you're saying, you can file, but we are not going to commence our review until some later date, that we don't have any control, that the board doesn't have any control over, but that the applicant is anxious to have this moving forward in a, sort of an expedited process. So, that's the only thing I would caution the board about.
I mean, I'm more inclined to keep it as we have because I think if we don't do it that way, we're gonna get ourselves caught in the fox.
Yeah.
Seems to me, keep it, keep it the way it is, and if it, if it becomes a problem, we can look at it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we'll be reasonable in reality, but if we don't do it this way, then...
Yeah, it seems there, like, there are ways that you could fast-track portions of it informally without having it fully, without triggering the, the special permit process starting.
So, has the town and other projects allowed people to come in and commence peer review, I think is what you're saying, Gene?
When you file the application, we'll send it right off to the peer review, you put up the escrow at that time, and that buys you a month before the hearing even opens, so the peer reviewers already commence.
Okay.
And then when the hearing opens, you may, in fact, have your preliminary comments already submitted.
And if there was something deficient in the original application, that would give us, the DA's to...
Well, that's different. Deficient in the application, again, I'm assuming it's a full application...
You would...
And the peer review begins upon the full application. And then it gets noticed, you know, the two-week noticing, whatnot, the hearing doesn't open for a month from the application date.
Okay.
The submitted date.
Okay. All right, and then, just going back, there were two points I had raised there. Were we okay on the first point, which was "to the extent applicable"?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to find the right section. So, the, a similar comment now that we've had on a couple of the points on 8.14.11, subsection B, Sub Paragraph 2. So, again, if it's a, if it's an AMU, it could be something that doesn't get a license or a permit, and in addition, where you had made the change in an earlier provision, you did allow the special permit to issue with a provisional as opposed to a, I, it wasn't really clear what a fully permitted would be, like, I felt like that was implying it had to be a final, which we couldn't get until after we built. What's the correct number on this, Michael? Sorry. 8.14.11B2.
Okay.
So, we're kind of just matching it up to 8.14.10, Sub Paragraph 3.
And I think that would be fine as long as the language is matched exactly, it's mirrored.
Correct.
Because we don't want to add additional or new terms.
Right.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll mirror that language. We're mirroring it to the, where we have to be in order to file the application, which was in Section 8.14.10.3.
So, that's not a issue?
Right.
Right. Official file, like, license issued by the home office, but AMU as, as applicable or as...
Yes. Okay, so it's 8.14.10.3, I will add that language in there.
What I want, I think we skipped one that I do want to go back to, Dan. When we talked about the zoning map, where's the, the schools and the distance? Did we not get to it yet, or did we skip it? Yeah, I'm sorry, can we go back to 8.14.7 real quick? Because that tied to the boundary of the map. So, in the version that was posted prior to today, from Attorney Egan, in subsection 2A, the word "existing" was moved up into subsection 2, and it applied to all of A through I, so there was some additional language in there, and in addition, there was language about the 500 feet being measured in a straight line from the use, from the building or structure to the property line of the adjoining property. So, when we eliminated those 500... So when we eliminated those 500-foot corners from our map, we did it based on the language that the planning board had posted. And we actually prefer that language. We also think the existing was moved into the correct spot. We felt as though the existing had to apply to everything from A through I.
I'll just make a clarification. So I think what you were looking at is Mr. Goldberg's suggested edits, not a board. The board had not made a determination on that. So that wasn't the board version, but that was.
Correct.
Mr. Goldberg's suggested edits. So I have, I haven't changed that and made those changes in there. This is always maintained the same throughout this process. So if you want to talk about that now, I just want everybody to make sure that.
We like Mr. Goldberg's edits.
So I, yeah, I think. Yeah, I thought those were good. I mean, I think, I think existing or pre, either existing or pre-existing should be in the, should modify all of the, all of the A through I. And then I did like the language that it suggested, which is in one of these, about the nearest point of the building in which the proposed AMU is located.
So you might go from building to building versus property line to property line, which is how it is now.
No, property line to building.
Property line.
Property line to building.
Oh, okay.
It was a compromise, which I, which I liked. And I, the reason we liked it is it gives us a chance to preserve the fields.
So it would say to the nearest point of the building in which the proposed AMU is located. And then up above, it would say AMU may not be located within 500 feet of the following pre-existing properties or existing properties. I think they mean the same thing.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, if you're existing, it means you're pre-existing.
This is done, they got that. Suzanne got it. That one's done. Okay. Right, so that's this one, Dan. So Suzanne got it. That's good. Yeah, this one's fine. So in 81415 on subsection 6, we wanted the odor condition, not just that, we wanted to strike the exterior of the AMU and just leave it to at any adjoining use of property. We felt as though within the property, you might walk out of one building and into a different AMU or out into the courtyard of the building. And if you could smell it on our own property, we didn't think that that would be a reason to trigger a violation of a special permit because walking either within the buildings or adjacent to the buildings on the property. But we do recognize that it can't go out to an adjoining lot line to any other property owner. But we felt as though within the property, because there might be multiple AMUs, we run a risk of violating it if you can smell it anywhere in our buildings.
Well, I mean, I think it's in there for a couple of reasons. One is because you told us with the approach you're taking that you wouldn't be able to smell it outside your building. And secondly, once it's outside your building, even if it's still on your lot, there's nothing to prevent it at that point from going beyond your lot. So, I mean, to me, there's reasons for that.
Sort of a policy decision, right? A policy decision that the board would have to make.
Are you saying with the building?
No, I was saying, we own 167 acres. We own thousands of feet of frontage along 1600 Oscar Street. It is a large property. Is there a chance you might be able to smell it just outside of the building? Somebody walking out and has the odor on their clothes and somebody's going to walk by and says, oh, I can smell him and you're outside the building? It just seems like what we're trying to protect is a butters. And I felt like we could do it by protecting a butters.
Firstly, the parcels on Holt Road have a much smaller acreage. I figure what they range from, from two to 10 acres, I think.
But if the, if the provision is that you can't smell it on any adjoining property, doesn't that cover it? Again, you know.
I appreciate the ask, but I like it the way it is. It makes it harder for you regarding odor and that's kind of the point.
Thank you. So in 8.14.17, prior to any construction being undertaken in North Andover, any site or development to which this section applies. So once we put in one use, our site will be subject to this, this bylaw. But we might be pulling building permits that have nothing to do with this bylaw? It does in that section, right, right. It's almost the same, kind of a similar change that you made to, to 81418, which is it's limited to when the use requires a special permit under this section. So it's kind of making 17 and 18 consistent.
So you're suggesting that we just add that sort of prepositional phrase in the beginning for any site where the use requires a special permit to 81417 also?
Yeah.
I guess I'm just not seeing what the problem is. Prior to construction, any site or development to which the section applies, so anything that has an, is an AMU, has to comply with zoning.
Maybe it's just that the sentence is superfluous, maybe. I'm, yeah, maybe.
I'm just not sure what.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. What is it telling us we actually have to do? It just says we have to comply with the law.
Seems to say that.
Yeah, no, no, actually, you know what? I think I was reading 17 and 18 at the same time and I felt like they both had the same.
Yeah, I think you're good.
Yeah, yeah, you know what? Yeah, I think 18 covers it. And that's it? Can, can I? Could I just take one moment as well and just discuss the potential other warrants? And then to the extent that there's any that you would prefer that we address rather than the planning board?
That would probably be a very good idea, so, yeah.
So we looked at six warrants. We looked at the host community agreement, which is part of our call for the town meeting.
Is that necessary?
I'm not sure. We.
Okay.
We wanted to preserve zoning type matters for this board. But we needed to call a warrant, so we called a warrant. Okay. If we withdraw that at a future date, we might withdraw that at a future date. The second is a pilot. I do believe that in the past, I know when we did the solar project, we had to put the pilot in as an article. And we are gonna, as part of the host community agreement, part of the revenue on this project will be tied to a pilot. So we would need to get a warrant in for a pilot.
Is that pilot outside of the mitigation costs?
Yes, it is outside the mitigation costs, exactly. Yep. So I don't know whether that falls in zoning or whether we should do that on our own.
Pilot, what kind of pilot?
Personal property taxes on the equipment being installed to men.
It's a financial article. It's not zoning.
Okay, so, so, so that will be the second one. Then we'll go through either the Board of Selectmen or Finance. Then the zoning articles or the MOD, which we've talked about, the moratorium, which you talked about earlier. So I don't think we need to discuss that. The third one is we believe that the MMOD should have a sunset. We believe the MMOD sunset should be December 31, 2018. And the reason that we believe that is the case is that is the date that all control is removed from the DPH and vested in the CCC. And as of December 31, 2018, DPH no longer has any control over cannabis and it is all governed by the CCC regulations. So that was one.
Suzanne, do you have any thoughts on that?
So my only thought is that the regulations are now, we don't know exactly how that's going to transpire. So if it may be smarter to wait for the annual town meeting to do that.
Well, okay. I think it could wait, or you could put the later of 20, of when the switch over, I mean, when it switches over or December 31, 2012.
But I mean, the broader question is the right conflict between the MMOD and what we're in the bylaw? Can they both exist for a period of time?
So once the Cannabis Control Commission takes over the regulation of, once it, once it leaves the DPH and goes to the Cannabis Control Commission and it's all regulated under one entity, then our zoning by law for that particular provision will not be relevant anymore.
So isn't that the local?
So, Mr. Chairman.
And that's incorporated into this. So we've incorporated those.
Oh, it is incorporated into this.
Yes, we've incorporated those provisions.
Mr. Chairman, our example would be, let's, let's just say, and everything goes exactly to the timeline that we had projected earlier. We would then come in and file for a special permit. Would we be filing under 814 or 812? And so we felt as though there should be a provision because we're going to file for an RMD in order to get a provisional and be in the expedited. So we felt as though there should be a warrant that says 812 sunsets. And in the interim, an applicant can apply under either 812 or 814 if it's an MMOD. Because we obviously would file under 814 because our property isn't in the 812 overlay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that the, not to get, this sounds like this could be very confusing and the better thing may be just to wait on it. But because the MMOD is not relevant to your client's property, I don't know why it becomes relevant to this. That's all I'm saying.
We were just thinking about consistency for everybody. I wouldn't want anyone to raise the question at a public meeting if somebody says, well, what's going to happen with the properties on Holt Road? Are they going to apply under 812 or 814? It was just something.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking now that I remember what's in that, it, you could keep them both. They're not in conflict with each other because they address different things. And you would never apply under 8.12 because it doesn't give you the scale.
We couldn't, we wouldn't qualify. We could only apply under 8.14. Yep.
So I think we would be okay keeping it.
Keeping it until the.
There needs to be a host agreement if someone, under the old law, if someone wanted to do it on Holt Road and where we have, would have this new zoning, I think that would be probably not very, not much of an appetite on the town to, to agree into that at that point.
And then I think the last one was the map. And I think we covered it. So I think those are the six. So I think then from that, we will pursue the pilot outside of the zoning forum. And other than that, we will sit back and do what we can do to support.
Okay. I think that's, sounds like a process forward, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I wanted to, I know people have been sitting patiently and watching and if anybody wanted to get up and speak about anything, they're certainly welcome to. Although maybe all possible conversation on this topic has been exhausted at this point. Okay. Good. So we did it. We have our marching orders. You're going to be busy.
Can someone just recap what happened, what actually is happening next?
On Thursday afternoon, I am going to bring to the Eagle Tribune a legal notice posting for the zoning public hearings, which will occur on January 9, 16, and 23. The only notice, the only date the notice will reflect is the 9th.
Yeah.
Then you would continue to the 16th or 23rd.
And is it going to be 7 o'clock here?
Yep, yep. Unless for some reason that, well, it'll be noticed here.
It'll be noticed here, but if for some reason we think we're going to get a enormous crowd and we have to move it, we can do that.
We might have to move it, but we'll account for that.
Yeah.
And so the notice just reflects the gist of the warrant article and gives people the ability to come and look at the material that exists today. And so I'll just keep a running folder that gets updated with the January 2nd material.
So 1-9, 1-16, 1-23, and then.
And you have a.
The special meetings, 1-30. Do we have, is there generally a planning board meeting that night?
Yes, so typically we meet for a half hour.
Yeah, we schedule something five minutes before or a half hour before.
We schedule it five, a half hour before and it usually lasts about five minutes.
Will we have a separate meeting on the 16th? I think we're scheduled to meet that night anyway, or will the public hearings sort of cover it? How does that work?
There will be a regular meeting. It'll just be part of the regular meeting, yeah.
I'm sorry, so.
On the 16th.
On the 16th, so the second.
Well, just have a regular meeting. That'll just be an agenda topic.
Yes, so the second and 16th will be a regular agenda. And then this will be one of the items on the 16th. But on the 9th and the 23rd, this will be the only item, well, the zoning articles will be the only item.
I know, we're going to be great friends, yeah. Yahoo. And so just in terms of the draft, you're going to edit it up for us and then we'll just make final comments based on that.
Yep.
And then on the 2nd, we'll see if we can, you know, put it to bed at least for the moment. But it, there clearly will be edits, there'll be things somebody will notice that we'll have to adjust.
So the goal would be after the 2nd, if you can fine tune your edits at that point, would be to get it to the Board of Selectmen in time for their hearing, which is the 8th.
Yeah, for their, to ingest it and, I think it's important.
To make it onto the warrant.
It becomes our thing. And I think we ought to do the map to ourselves.
Yep.
I know it's the holidays and everything, but if we are really going to have to get this finalized to get on the warrant for the 8th, can we definitely see this, the draft before the meeting? I know, like, it just has been changing so much so that we all have a chance to read it and have our final comments.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
I will do that, I will.
I just, I do want to thank Suzanne and Jean for all the work you guys have done. It's not easy and even getting stuff to us on Monday, Monday nights is, Tuesday nights is helpful and you guys, thank you.
And, Anton, I just want to point out that we didn't go through your edits one by one. So if you have any that you think had not been addressed in this draft, please call them out and then we'll bring them up again at the next meeting.
All right, excellent. Well, well done.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Appreciate the time tonight.
Did you have more heft in the master plan document than you did in the zoning document here? Looks good. Looks snazzy.
This is not even 5 minutes.
Okay, so master plan update. What I handed out was a document that pretty much summarizes all the public forums to date, which there's been several. The main one was that November 2nd, which we had tremendous turnout, really, really credit to the Master Plan Committee. They got the word out. We far surpassed the expectation. Subsequent to that, there were two follow-up forums at the Stevens Estate on November 8th and the 16th. We also put online a ability to provide comments online. So we got a full spreadsheet of things that people have submitted through our website. And one of the committee members went to the high school and was able to solicit a lot of feedback from the high school students. So all of those, and that was kind of a progression from that November 2nd. So that's why it's taken a little time to compile everything. But the document before you compiles everything and it kind of, by chapter within the master plan, calls out what's good, what could be better, what the future should look like. And then it subsequently goes on to list every single comment on the posted notes for, as much as they were readable, just typed in a, in a master list. So that document was reviewed this past Thursday night at the committee meeting. I wanted to get it to you prior.
I wanted to get it to you prior to posting it on the website, but I would like to post it on the website tomorrow. We've had a lot of inquiries, like, when are we going to hear, like, what that night was like? So this really summarizes all the comments. There's a lot of consistent comments in terms of housing, open space, economic development. So they were able to kind of pull out the key ones that were somewhat repetitive, but it's, it's a very comprehensive list.
Good.
That being, good, yeah. Again, I think, I think the number one goal is to get the public to come to the table and I think we did, so, at this point.
I think, I think you should post it. I mean, because if there is something that we say, oh, this seems odd, I mean, it's so easy just to tweak it once it's already up there, you know?
And we made some minor tweaks the other night.
People need to see it as soon as possible, so...
That being said, on January 4th, the committee meets again and is really centered around trying to create a vision statement from what they hear. So that's really a comprehensive process. They've all, we, RKG helped provide some other towns' vision statements that they thought were good and kind of applicable to what they're hearing and seeing here. So the committee has taken those and they're going to come prepared on the 4th to try to draft a vision statement. And then...
The subway, right? I see.
Somebody wants a subway. I don't know if it's the restaurant or the mode of transportation.
I found a lot of comments to, to create kind of like an urban feel in a suburban town. So you really see a progression of like just new ideas and that, you know, a lot of people move to the city and from what RKG has said, that's kind of turning the other way again. So you're getting, people want maybe suburban, but they want a lot of those amenities of the urban environment. So the next meeting after the 4th, I believe, is the 18th. And that's when RKG is going to come back with, start and talk about goals and recommendations. So we're on track. Hopefully, we can get a working document, certainly a time for time meeting, but I would recommend several publications for that process as well. So we want to start backing up the calendar and including this topic on agendas once we get closer.
Excellent.
Okay.
All righty. So let's see, do we have minutes?
We do. We have two.
Does somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
For both the site visit and December 5th.
Both the site visit and the meeting on...
December 5th.
December 5th, thank you.
Second, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, yahoo. Yippee.